Today is October tenth, time is now six P M. This is the Horace City Council's special meeting agenda for tonight. The only thing we will be discussing tonight will be the assessments to be levied by the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven assessment districts. So hopefully that is what you all are here for tonight. Looks like we have Rachel, Stephanie, Naomi, and myself here. Sarah will not be attending tonight, is that correct, Brenton?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
She's traveling, so...
So we do have quorum.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be looking for a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
I'll make the motion, please.
Okay, I got a motion, do I got a second?
I'll second that.
I got Naomi and Rachel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Before we start here, Lucas, do you have anything to say?
Yes, so I will just introduce what we're doing at this hearing today. Give kind of an update on the process that's outlined under Century Code and how the city has traditionally done special assessments. And then, as you stated, there are seven improvement districts that we will be discussing tonight. The city's Special Assessment Commission has discussed all of those lists. They've had meetings for those on July twenty-fourth, August second, September fourth, and September ninth. Some of the districts, the lists were confirmed. Five of them were confirmed on September fourth, and then two of them were confirmed on September ninth by the Special Assessment Commission. And so those now are presented to the city council for confirmation of those assessment lists. But before that can happen, we have this objection hearing to allow those individuals who have filed written objection to the special assessments, Special Assessment Commission's proposed assessment to this body tonight, so you can hear those written objections. So under statute, it requires that in order to speak tonight, you have to file a written objection with the city auditor before the meeting. That information is provided to property owners in the improvement districts in the letter that the city sends out now as part of the improved special assessment process. And so that's referenced in that letter that if you wish to speak tonight, file that written objection with the city auditor prior to the meeting. It's also included in the newspaper publication, which is statutorily required by the city to publish notice of tonight's objection hearing. And it provides in there that if you'd like to object to the Special Assessment Commission's proposed assessment, file that written objection, and then you can come tonight as an agreed person and discuss that with this governing body. And then finally, that's included on the city's website. And so that's what we're doing here tonight, is listening to any of those objections. It's my understanding that six have been filed.
There were six.
I believe you guys have a list in front of you that provides for who filed those written objections. Prior to going over those objections, the city's engineering department will go over the various projects, and we'll just do it one by one. They'll provide information on what the project is, and then the methodology that was used by the Special Assessment Commission to come up with the proposed assessments for that respective project. And then, so we'll hold the public hearings tonight, but I ask that the city council not take any action on the list tonight. There was a recent Supreme Court decision issued in North Dakota, and Jim and I still need to meet to go over that and then provide details of that to the Special Assessment Commission prior to the city council adopting or confirming any lists. So with that, that's kind of the process that we'll go over tonight, we'll hold the public hearings, and then this body will likely come back and meet the week of October twenty-first. I don't know if a date has been selected, and so possibly at the end of the meeting, Mr. Mayor, we'll try to select a date that works for the council on when we can come back to discuss confirmation of the proposed assessment lists. But with that, I would turn it over to the engineering department, and we could start with the first project, which is Sanitary Sewer Improvement District number twenty-two-one dash four. It's lift station S A fourteen. As I said, we'll have them go through their song and dance, and then we can open up the public hearing for that and hear any objections to that proposed list.
All right, so Lucas said this is Sanitary Sewer Improvement District twenty-two-one dash four, lift station S A fourteen. This project consisted of the construction of a regional sanitary sewer lift station and force main required to connect the city, the lift station to the city of Horace's existing infrastructure, project services portions of Lakeview and Cub Creek, Lakeview Edition and Cub Creek first and second edition. So this is sixty, where's my mouse? Ah, there it is. Hard to see, right there. So this is sixty-third street. This is the second, the high school is right here. So lift station is located north and east of the Saint Benedict's Church in this large lot here. So the project basically was a lift station and force main. This services, this provides the regional component of the traditional sanitary sewer service. The improvement district was bounded by the old roadway property on the west side. Basically, anything inside here that's colored was the district. The district was the outside perimeter of that. So that's the old rural property on the west, Wall Avenue on the south, fifty-seventh street on the west, on the east, and eighty-second and eighty-third on the north side. Project cost to be assessed is one point three seven million. All the soft costs were broken into the, brought back into the project costs. So this was based on the regional assessment, based on equivalent units. You will see on here that we have, it's hard to see, and if you set it upright. So you'll see we've got some one point fives here, that's one equivalent unit with a point five project driver, because in order for these lots to be developed, they needed to have these, this lift station. So you are, there are some on here along eighty-first that are not included in this because they have a gravity sewer stubbed out from along the road bed for when we did the first, when we did the first connection to Fargo. So same with these large lots here, they have access directly to the back. This is a pond lot, and for storm sewer, sanitary sewer, the Special Assessment Commission decided that, told us that they didn't feel that storm sewer ponds had any benefit from sanitary sewer. This is a potential for a park area, so one per acre was selected here, and then one point three equivalent units per acre, because this is a church. And then down here, three per acre was the consensus by the Special Assessment Commission. That's the density for these larger lots that have been, that haven't been subdivided yet. So like I said, this is Cub Creek second edition, and then Lakeview Edition. So any questions so far? This project didn't receive any objections throughout the process for the Special Assessment Commission, and I don't believe we have any for tonight that were provided.
Okay. Does anybody up here have any questions?
Do not.
No.
Steph, or Naomi? Okay, no questions, sir.
Okay, so we're just gonna move on and do it all at the end, or how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I probably misspoke by calling it a public hearing, because it's not a traditional public hearing that we open and close it, it's just a hearing to hear objections, so we can just move on to the next district.
Do you want me to open it once we get to one that actually has any sort of...
If there's objections to it, then we'll...
Understood.
...provide it.
All right, well, let's load up the next one here. The next project, we have the Sanitary Sewer Improvement District twenty-two-one dash six, lift station S A thirteen, same song and dance, lift station and force main. This is located along the creek, Parkway and County Road seventeen. This services the area as shown along here. We've got Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park, we have Riverdale to the north, and then we have Deer Creek Estates on both sides of, we have Deer Creek Estates on both sides of the Deer Creek Parkway, Ashwood Edition, Deer Creek Estates third, and then we've got some larger lot parcels along this side. So this one was factored the same way. We've got, the way the Special Assessment Commission did this, there's fifty-four units, twenty-four trailers in the Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park, eight additional service lines, so they can put eight trailers in there. We have put infrastructure in for that. And then we have a one point five because they were a project driver on this. The areas here in Riverdale, they have septic tanks right now, but we did stub out some sewer north of eighty-sixty-second avenue, so that when the time comes, if this gets extended in the Riverdale, it will run to lift station thirteen, which is the N A here, and into the, into this course range of Fargo. You'll see here that these point seven fives are less than the one and less than the one point five. That was in discussions with the Special Assessment Commission after the objection hearing to them. The way the Special Assessment Commission treated these was they have the benefit, but they also have septic tank. So those that don't need it now, or can't immediately connect to it, were reduced by point two five. And those that could connect to it, like this lot here, and this one here, because there's a main out here, they remained at a one. So the density remained the same. These are all one point five because they are project driver, they need a lift station to develop. And then these are the three per acre. You're gonna see a theme here with three per acre on a lot of the larger lots, just for consistency's sake. You come over here, and we've got a non-applicable for Southdale Farms eighth and Sunset Valley. They'll come across on sixty-fifth avenue and down into lift station, I believe it's twelve in Southdale Farms addition. So any questions with the project or the methodology? So at the, if you read your packet, there is the section in here where we have updates from the Special Assessment Commission. So that's where I talk about the Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park getting the additional service lines that were put in along that roadway. Let's see here, Deer Creek Estates versus second, the previous pond lot. So this, if you remember, was a pond lot at one time, but with the redesign to South, to Deer Creek Estates, the pond is now down here, storm water pond, that's why it's a N A. But this is, doesn't have to remain a pond. Instead of pumping out for this pond to discharge to County Road seventeen, it's all gonna come through here and into the, the storm sewer along sixty-fourth avenue and over to drain twenty-seven, since we've had issues with flow along County Road seventeen.
Okay, we are not picking up any, anything from Fargo?
No.
Fargo's Deer Creek?
No.
Okay.
Could you speak a little bit to, in the memo, under the, on page two? It says parcels within the assessment on the west side of Cheyenne River will need a new lift station. So these parcels will be included in a future assessment?
So that's the ones that are west of Cheyenne River?
Okay, thank you. Okay, and they're not included in this district at all?
They are, but we took them as non-applicables. So that's like the Grey Hawks and that.
Okay.
So they'll need to have one put in by Albert. The planning for that is at the entrance to Grey Hawk or in that area.
But you're talking about if there's a future need for them that they want?
Yeah.
Septic, okay. And then, I think there was another reference in that same area, let's see.
On page...
So the second one says it drains south, okay. And then within, the last bullet point, the area east is at which, the area east of seventy-six, Section Eight Township, along with all the area east of sixty-six, will need a new lift station when the area starts getting developed. Where's that, where's that on, on the map?
The last four.
It was just hard to follow up with all the different...
Yeah, there's a lot going on in this one with existing residential having that.
It said, uh...
East of sixty-six, oh.
Yeah.
So outside of the boundary of this one, there's another station that's coming. And Sunset Valley crosses here and it crosses down here, so they won't go to that, to the existing one.
For some reason, I was thinking that it was just distinguishing, these were people that were getting assessments, and you were distinguishing that they would be an additional...
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
So we've got the area, let me get my bearings here. So this is, is existing residents with a septic, and then this one is as well, plus there's the Vista Edition on this site.
Okay, so they're N A in this district?
They're a N A in this district.
Okay, okay.
Since the project only went to about here, and that's not even this project, that's sixty-fourth avenue project, we just, we don't have the sewer there for this one. It probably will have to go the other way through Willow Road or something.
Okay.
Why do you include them in the assessment district if they aren't?
So when we plan the districts, we use our best judgment to make sure that those receiving benefit get to it. And sometimes projects can morph throughout the process.
Sure.
And we wanna make sure that as, you know how things move in ours, they move pretty quick. So somebody may not plan on developing when we are just thinking of the district, and then all of a sudden, it's like, well, wait a minute, somebody has come and approached that of purchasing the land. So we try to get the district as reasonable as we can, knowing what's coming. So there's gonna be inevitably some that get assessed, some that don't get assessed. It's just kind of the way that the benefit and the way that the project works out.
So instead of changing the boundary to not include the ones that are N A?
We just make them...
Yeah, okay.
It's tough to, in the beginning, because everybody thinks that if they're in this district, they're gonna get assessed for it, and we try, we have to balance benefit to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Steph?
Nope, those are the only ones to have in this one.
Brooklyn?
I'm good.
Good. Okay.
And for this one, there were written objections filed for this one. I don't know if you were done with that.
I paused just in case there were questions. I think if the floor is open to...
So do you need me to open a public hearing then?
No, we just need to hear from those that provided the written objections. So I believe you have the list, Mr. Mayor, for twenty-two-one dash six, we can hear those.
Okay.
Is this, oh, so this packet right here includes multiple districts, okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's, there's three written objections for...
Are they in order?
Yes, yes, they are.
So I guess I can, I guess, so there is a...
Karen or Tom Craft? Three?
Tom Craft and Karen.
And what'd you say, Reg, Reg, actually? And Tom Craft, the Horace City Council is a homeowner of sixty-nine fifty-one Riverdale Drive, Horace, Forte five eight, there's a fort. He objected to the special assessments for the sewer improvement district number twenty-two-one dash six. That's all that one says. Another one from Tom Craft, that says we presently have no access to the infrastructure nor do we have the need for it. This development should be excluded entirely for this reason. It is ridiculous to ask to pay for a project we were totally left out of. We have one here from James Guyer. Please consider this letter to be a written objection and appeal directed at the city council for a subsequent to a decision made by the Special Assessment Commission, September fourth, twenty twenty-four. Attached is a copy dated September third, twenty twenty-four, a written objection made to the commission, incorporated that into the objection. We'd argue that had further information been given to us in two thousand and eighteen, we likely would have had a majority vote in favor of sanitary sewer for Riverdale subdivision. The results were three no, four by my count, eight yes, and ten asking for more information. We submit that had more information been provided, a probable majority would have voted yes. We did not get the opportunity to vote for a sewer system, someone interested in engineering or the city of Horace government decided that three no votes left us out of the sewer, sewer service. There are likely interested in engineering and city employees who remember why we were left out. There may be documents at either entity showing who and why the decision was made. Transparency might help us accept the conclusion reported by our city engineering. I can say we should be charged zero for this settlement, as we likely never going to benefit from this lift station and further. We should have given the opportunity to vote for or against the sanitary service after we provided further information on the pros and cons of the costs and benefits. So I was there, and if this was directed at me, I remember very well that at that time the city council took undecided as a no.
Are we talking back in two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I was confused.
I was confused too.
Yeah, so there was a letter, there was a survey sent out to most of the rural subdivision about that timeframe. Horseshoe was one of them, Riverdale was one of them, Shadow Lane, Brink's, all those. And at that time, there were, it was yes, no, or undecided. And they were, like they said in the letter, like, three no's, eight yeses, and ten asking for more information. And at that time, the city council was not in the business of pushing sanitary sewer service on anyone, they were more or less engaging interest. And at that time, the ten maybes were considered to be no's, and it just didn't proceed from there. So we've actually met, the previous mayor and I met with the residents at one time in the backyard meeting to discuss this, probably in two thousand and eighteen or nineteen. Riverdale's right here, south of the...
So it's the green?
It's this green, yeah.
Which is...
Point seven five.
Give me one second.
So Mr. Mayor, if any of those individuals are here tonight, they are permitted to discuss their written objection to the council at this time?
Okay.
So we have, I'm sorry, can, I just wanna make sure I have all the right people. So Riverdale, two Riverdale, and...
Three.
And one person in Horseshoe Bend, or...
So there's actually, there's, so we've got...
I'm sorry, I can't figure out whose letters belong to who.
They're on the bottom, it says who's assigned them. Go back to the second page. Okay, so that's the first, that's the first one, that's Tom Craft.
They're in our, they're in the green.
And Karen and Tom.
Okay.
Second one is just Tom.
Tom.
Third one is James Guyer.
And that's also in Riverdale?
And then we have one from Christiansen Companies.
Oh, there's, there's two from Mr. Guyer.
I thought it was just one.
Sorry, there's one dated October nine and one dated September three.
Yeah, because one of them goes to the Special Assessment Commission.
Okay, oh, and then this next one from Christiansen is in this group too.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm understanding now, thanks, Jim.
Did you, did you wanna read off Christiansen's first before we get into...
So I can describe Christiansen's, do you want me to...
Yeah, show me that one.
So Christiansen's Companies owns these three parcels along here, and there are sewer stubs at sixty-eight. Forget what that one is, that one, and there's one here. But we also have a crossing here on the new sixty-eight coming into this. So we assumed, I shouldn't say assumed, we assessed a full value to these, these lots. And after meeting, we talked about the Special Assessment Commission, and they said meet with, meet with Christiansen, which we did. And we went through the plans for Southdale Farms fourth, and everything here in Magenta goes to a different lift station, it goes to the one for Southdale Farms. But we do have an access to sewer here, since these are large lots, not knowing what's going to go in the, in those lots, or in those parcels, or how they're gonna be subdivided. So they're basically requesting that this hundred percent benefit be reduced to, I believe, was it a quarter?
It says remove or greatly reduce.
Remove or greatly reduce, so...
To a quarter, yes.
And was, was that request discussed with the Special Assessment Commission, and then they worked out this as their final plan?
They, they, this came up towards the end, and they approved the list, but gave the latitude to meet with Christiansen.
To you?
View, yes, for us to meet with them.
Okay.
And bring it to the city council.
I have, okay, so Christiansen Companies is saying that these parcels are on two...
So they were partially, partially assessed after going back through the records. They were partially assessed for a lift station in Southdale Farms.
Okay.
So rather than...
Partially, they didn't get the full amount that they should have?
They didn't get a full, not, not, not that they, not the, not the should.
Okay.
Just, just look at it as they received a partial benefit from, just say lift, I forget what number it is.
In Southdale?
Is it twelve? Okay, so twelve. They got a partial benefit from twelve, and we assign a full benefit to thirteen, where we probably should reduce that benefit on thirteen.
This one?
Yes, to a partial.
Are the numbers you're showing us tonight your suggestion?
No.
No.
These are what was, we can't change that from what was approved by the Special Assessment Commission, gets presented to you, and then we now can present this as a, with this objection.
So when, when we certify then, are you going to have the new numbers ready?
Could that be a...
Yeah, if the, again, we can hear from the objectioners who filed these. If the council desires, you can change the proposed assessment, you can increase it or decrease it. And then, yeah, Jim can, Jim can work on those numbers and...
So this is a full benefit? They had a partial benefit to the other one? So what you are essentially are saying is it should be a partial and a partial to equal a full?
Yeah. I guess, I mean, is there any way to, for you to have reviewed, make your recommendations, and then, and then talk with the Special Assessment Commission to see if it's jiving? You know what I'm saying, they're kind of our lead on, on this. Or have you shared your thoughts after you reviewed it with them?
We were directed to look into what the previous assessment was.
Okay.
And to meet with them, to kind of go through it, and just get all the facts that we could out of it, because we didn't have them that night. It was one of those things where it came up at the objection hearing. I don't remember if a motion was approved for the contingent upon meeting with them, but we had the latitude to meet with them.
It was to meet with them and present the information to the city council.
That's what I thought.
All right, and so SAC wanted you to review, and in your latitude, make your recommendation to us. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we work under the direction of the Special Assessment Commission, and then we typically don't change anything until we get higher authority from you guys.
Do we have to direct you tonight to do, to do that, or is that at a later date then?
So let me put it this way, can I recommend, did they, can I request that they allow us to do that?
Yeah, absolutely, because you're gonna meet again. So again, if you guys wanna propose changes tonight, we can make those, or the engineering department can make those changes, and then present them to you at the, at your next meeting.
Do, do you have your suggestions?
We have a fifty-four, forty, thirty, twenty, ten.
What does that, what does that mean?
Half of the, half of, partial of a half, partial of less. I think, we have all those.
Hundred percent, seventy-five.
Oh, I see, okay, are we gonna kind of, and I suppose shifting those then changes the numbers for everybody else?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So me and Jim always like to talk about the balloon analogy, where you squeeze a balloon in one section.
It's gonna go seven.
Yeah, again, I go with the other portion.
So can you bring up to fifty?
Can I just ask one question, Jim? So when this was done by the Special Assessment Committee, it was, these numbers were because it was not taken into account for the other, was that other assessment forgotten about?
Not necessarily forgotten about, it was, it was, the exact amount and benefit wasn't known at that time. If it was a ten percent benefit, if it was a five percent benefit...
Of that one, or this?
Of the previous, yes.
Okay, so...
So we had to identify how much of that one, and we, when we went back and looked through records, it basically just says there's a partial assessment.
Like, you're thinking fifty percent?
Well, that's where I'd like to start.
That's why you're showing us the fifty, forty, whatever.
Okay, okay. And that one has not been verified, or certified?
No.
Okay, so...
The other one has, that one's long gone.
Yeah, that's, okay, yeah, okay.
Done nowhere.
We're onto this one.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, when these numbers were suggested by the SAC, why wasn't it taken into account at that time, and why is it only being taken into account now?
Because we didn't propose it to the Special Assessment Commission at that time, because it just...
So then they brought it up, and then you're like, well...
Right. So it's no different than, I'll use Vista's example, I'll probably jump in the gun, but there is one where Vista gets a water and sewer service if they got a service. And at the Special Assessment Commission objection hearing, a guy came in and said, I own a lot, I put my service in, I don't think I should be assessed for it. Makes perfect sense.
Okay.
It just, the timing worked out where he beat the public project, so he wouldn't, it makes sense to not assess them for the water and sewer, since they already paid for it. So it's kind of that thing where it's just kind of a check. It's just, you know, Chris, and Chris Mack, I guess, you didn't even really bring it up till the objection hearing, you're like, wait a minute, I have land in that one.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of, I didn't get the letter, because the person in our office who got it was out on vacation that week. So it was on their, it was in their mailbox, and then they were back the next day, and then after the meeting.
Oh.
And I was, I was at the meeting for, that's not the city's vote, but I was at the meeting for the Southdale Farm fourth, and this was brought up, and I was like, very surprised.
Okay.
So we, it's, it's basically a check in through the process, and I'm not even saying that, like I said, I don't recommend that we reduce it, stuff that we know.
By how much do you think would give them a fair portion of it, considering what they already have?
So with the amount, with the amount of growth in the Southdale Farms area, and the density that's being put in there, lift station twelve is ramping up relatively very quickly, where thirteen, it's got a bigger surface area, but thirteen is gonna be, is an option for if twelve gets mapped out or something, we can take it that way. And it depends on how these lots get built out too. So I would, I would be looking at probably maybe half of it going to north and half of it going to the south, but it kind of depends on how they wanna develop it too, because if it's all parking lot on the north, or if it's fronting parcels, you know, the lay, the lay of the land. But, you know, Chris and I, we've had conversations about this and we've got a stubble on sixty-eight. And I definitely think that there could be somebody that would want to look out of that one rather than go and lay two hundred feet of pipe or whatever to go south. So what do you have, is that up on the screen?
Yeah. I'm sure I'm going to have it through here, it's cut down.
So what we were looking at would be, since this is an equivalent unit based on the area, it'd be obviously eighty-one point seven is the equivalent units and seventy-five and sixty-one point three. And then it works its way down. Do we have the dollar amount anywhere?
So I want to talk about what I was saying with the balloon analogy where this is a hundred percent and this does not, or.
The map we have is the hundred percent?
It does not get cut exactly in half because the units still exist elsewhere, so it's closer to like maybe fifty-five or sixty. So like if you go over to the fifty percent units, it's now a hundred, hundred and eleven versus at a hundred, it was a hundred and ninety-five.
So let's look at the residential.
I'm sorry, can you show me that again, please?
So right now.
This is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And then you cut it down to fifty, the units are still existing. That's why I was talking with the balloon analogy where it's not just cutting it swiftly and out.
Can you zoom in?
That takes it to a hundred and eleven.
And that pushes the other ones up to four thousand.
Which, which other ones go up?
They all, everything else, everything else.
Yeah, can you show me, do I have that one? I don't have that one. Can you show me, over, yes, thank you, zoom.
Zoom in.
I have really bad eyes.
I'll be at this.
He's on the percentage. So, sorry, a hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one.
Goes to nineteen twelve.
Nineteen twelve.
So a couple hundred bucks.
Two thousand, fifty, and then two thousand, two hundred and ten.
And that's at the fifty percent benefit level, okay?
That's a twenty-five, this one is a twenty-five percent.
This one, this example is a, saying that they're receiving twenty-five percent?
Can you show the, the change to the fifty, the fifty percent?
Twenty-three thousand, fifty dollars on the Riverdale. So what's that?
One sixty.
Okay.
So hundreds of dollars when it gets spread over and everything.
And then go down, what is it, what is it for them at the fifty percent level?
Go down to the Deer Creek Estates ones. So the Deer Creek Estates ones will be more by one and a half times because of the driver.
Yep.
I'm sorry, honey.
And they're immediately using it.
I cannot see.
Roll it up again.
I'm so sorry.
And then the, and then the Chris Mack lots, what other numbers?
They go down to, well, those go down, the yellow ones.
Yeah, Deer Creek, okay. I am super blind.
Let me drive, let me drive. So let's do it this way, okay?
Thank you.
There's the one.
That's a hundred.
That's a hundred.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, I see now I messed up. Hundred.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And here, twenty-five.
Oh, wait, hold on one second, where are we? Oh, Deer Creek.
Deer Creek. So twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred.
Okay. And then one more run-through with the Riverdale.
Riverdale, alright. So this one is the hundred, right? I'm working backwards again, on the one left or right, right to left. Hundred, seventy-five, fifty.
Yep.
Twenty-five.
So. Eighteen hundred roughly to, so four hundred dollars over, four hundred dollars over.
What is your recommendation, Jim?
Like, start it out.
You think they should have a fifty percent benefit in this one?
Okay. Does the Special Assessment Committee know that? Do they know that you're of the opinion that fifty percent would be fair for?
We haven't had any meetings since.
Okay.
So like I said, we worked on direction with the Special Assessment Commission and going to trap the cart before the horse. We knew this was coming and rather than try to just explain it all to you, to have some graphics to show you.
Yeah, no, this is helpful, that is helpful.
How claws through, how it's.
I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking, you're very quiet, like what, anything?
I think what we should do at this point is let.
Yeah, sorry.
Whoever filed the objection provide their side of the story.
Yeah.
Should I just speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Come introduce yourself, Chris.
Okay.
So, yeah, I did the letter, I've been working with Jim on this. So on the previous, I kind of showed it too on the letter. Did you guys get the letter with additional PDFs?
I think so, with the little squares, the boxes.
And it had the.
And then it zoomed in?
Additional, yeah, it had the additional, I did it.
What you said, yes.
Since.
It's a bunch of pages.
Yeah, I did it, I showed like how many cents per square foot we were getting on those other assessments. So I believe in Southdale Farms third edition, that was for sewer, that was eight cents. And then when we did Southdale Farm first, and that's when the lift station was actually put in, then that was four cents on these, four to five cents, it depended on the lot. And when I did the calculation at the, this is per square footage, it's different than how Jim does it, but at the, at the full assessment, that was originally when it was the three, it ended up being fifteen cents. So I guess that's why I'm asking for the quarter. Because if you add the, the four, the eight, and the five cents, which, which is what the quarter would be, so if we did the quarter.
You're asking for a quarter, but it says removal.
Removal or a quarter, or greatly reduced is what I'm asking. So if you look at that one sheet, it's this one here.
Yeah.
I'm showing, at a quarter, and I'm showing five cents of each of the sheets.
And how are you getting your number?
I'm just dividing the total assessment by the square footage of the lot. So I guess what I'm.
I know, but we don't, the best on how to calculate it.
I, I know, but it's a way, that's a way, like when we kind of plan to sell it, we do per square foot. But I guess what I'm saying is, when I took the lift station thirteen assessment, the full, what the full assessment was, it ended up being fifteen cents per square foot. And what I'm saying is, once I added the quarter percent, which is five cents, and then I add the, the other two assessments that are already on these lots from the two previous sanitary districts, it ends up being like sixteen cents or so. Or seventeen cents per square foot. So that's why I'm asking for the quarter instead of, Jim's recommendation is the fifty percent. Because one, one thing to show, and I don't know if you can pull up what I sent Nick, showing where these services are, we have five services on the south side, we only have one in the middle. Yeah, so we get, we have those five and they're.
The stubs, I see.
So what, what we're going to calculate real quick, what Nick's going to calculate is what this would be per square foot.
Yes, yes.
And just get a basis then, because this one is a hundred percent benefit. And then we can see what's already been assessed to this one and subtract the difference and figure out where that is.
And that's kind of how I'm, and that's kind of how I broke it down. So I'm trying to get the full assessment from this one for our, our existing parcels to match.
Right.
Is all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, we have to see this similar system.
Yep, so that, that's, that's what I did. And that was the easiest way to do it without having the spreadsheet and doing it with that.
So how much have you been assessing, how much was on those other two lots?
Oh, it was four cent, one was four cents, one was five cents.
So twelve.
And then eight cents. So what I'm saying is.
If you zoom out, I believe these two parcels were five cents and this one was four cents. And then, so this one was four cents and eight cents, and these ones were five cents and eight cents. That's what we already have for assessments for the sanitaries on the previous districts. So for these here, this works out to about sixteen and a half, seventeen cents per square foot. So if we were to use that, that methodology here and say that that fault part, it probably would be closer to a quarter than it would be to a half.
And that's why I had the sheet instead of a quarter percent.
Depending, either way it goes, it would make a full assessment, a full total assessment if you follow that.
So you're recommending twenty-five?
I don't have, what's that?
So you're recommending twenty-five percent?
I think that, based on the numbers, the math that we have, in order from what a hundred percent assessment of thirteen to what's previously been paid here.
Okay, show me the numbers again with the twenty-five percent.
So this is, hold on, I got you, I got you.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know where I'm at in the clicking. So this one would be the twenty-five, right? And then that would be a full equivalent assessment between two lift stations.
Okay, now go up, show me those other ones. Chris, the problem I'm having is I don't know what, since this is a new system to me, I don't know how many cents per square foot is a reasonable amount. I don't have any.
I guess what, what I was doing, I was matching what the full assessment was. And then Jim and Nick, they just did the calculation based on what these other commercial lots are, or future commercial lots. What, did you say it was fif, or sixteen?
Sixteen cents.
Yeah. So if we do a quarter and then with the other two, they end up, it'll end up.
I see, yeah.
Being very close. And that's why I'm asking for the quarter instead of the fifty.
What is the dollar amount that is getting redistributed, overall dollar amount?
The whole project?
Uh, for those three lots, after you lower it down to twenty-five, what is the dollar amount that's getting redistributed?
A hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Sixty plus, so sixty.
Minus.
Well.
Seventy, eighty.
Sixty minus hundred and ninety-five, I'm already at a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yes, that's it.
And the other two is? All, all those commercial ones right there. I'm at a hundred and thirty-five for the left lot.
Do you want to see it at a hundred percent here, right?
No, yes, all I'm doing is just doing the math quick. Hundred and eighty thousand is what I'm redistributing.
Oh, I see, yeah. I'm really glad you're good at math, Nick.
I feel pretty good at calculating.
Yeah, so two hundred and ninety-seven versus one eighty.
Okay.
Okay. So we are redistributing a hundred and seventeen thousand across?
Across the holders.
Correct, understood.
Use the balloon.
Looking at it with the price in cents per square foot, do you think that is a reasonable proposal?
Based on the number, based on the project, I mean, that's really all we have to go on, is it a full benefit assessment per square foot is this, and then a partial with another partial, probably should equal the full.
Did you orig, I thought you originally said you thought a fifty percent.
I just decided, we just went through the numbers right now together, so.
And now, do you, are you kind of swinging now to see if the twenty-five percent is fair?
Yeah, because I think we just went through the numbers and went through the math.
Because Chris decided to show us the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so it'd be nine hundred dollars and more for people in Deer Creek about. Am I looking at that correctly? And, yeah, because we have to distribute, redistribute like a hundred and, like four hundred dollars more per lot per foot on Riverdale, is that about right?
That's what I remember, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And we are not taking action tonight?
Correct.
Okay. We're absorbing, anybody else?
Was that, was that it, Chris?
That's why I wanted to make a point is.
Yeah.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is Tom Kraft here?
Right here.
Sir?
Oh, I guess my number Adams speaks for itself.
Okay.
Short and sweet.
Yep.
Can I ask, a lot of the objections reference that, at some twenty eighteen discussion. So was, was there, was there desire to have been included in this district to obtain the sewer? Or are you just referencing?
That was the last communication we had.
Okay.
We had a homeowners meeting, that was like six, seven years ago. And it was just brought up and we haven't heard anything about it since until the government's letter.
Right.
Okay.
And at that time, the council wasn't going to like force this on there, it was come to the city if you want, wanted to be done. And obviously there was a lot, they wanted more information. And it just never got to the point of actually digging that deep into it and sending all that stuff. A big hurdle has been crossed with this because now it's just basically mains and services to the Riverdale area. But.
And that, and that's why their partial inclusion is because it's, it's, the services are brought.
Near them?
Stubbed out or whatever you call it, stubbed out close to them?
No, so the harsh, you talking why the Special Assessment Commission reduced it or?
No, why they had any.
I understand why they reduced it, I'm wondering, yeah.
So when the time comes and these septic tanks fail and they can't be replaced, or there's enough desire to extend the sewer through here, it has to go through this station that just got built. There is no way of deferring, because we've come up with, that's come up before, is that if the time would come when this was to be brought online, could they pay an assessment at that time? I've been told that there isn't a way to defer it for an X number of years. So this lot and this one can connect with a service line tomorrow. This one. Let me get to the right. This one can't, these guys can't. That's why there was the reduction of point two five, is because they can't immediately connect. Still acknowledging that there is benefit through this infrastructure.
So they did get a reduction.
At the Special Assessment Commission. I think the idea was their existing way that they have versus what's remaining. And that was.
So when do they get the other portion? Whenever they hook up?
There is no deferral on this.
She's saying when, when they connect, when they connect.
Yeah, when they connect, they get a local improvement. So. Never, this will never be made whole.
So if one person needed to connect, then everybody would have to pay for that, for assessed, to get it up there? I'm sorry.
If there was one person up there, you'd have to look at the cost of doing it. If there was the majority that wanted to, I mean, it's essential service, so the city could, I don't want to say it, they could just say, we're going to extend the service up there. But the council has not, previous councils have not wanted to do that, it's been when requested.
Right.
So this will never be a one assessment. This will never get, the remainder of this assessment will never get assessed on it.
I know, but if it, if they don't have, you have to explain the benefit to me, because if they can't fully connect.
So for sanitary serenity, four things, you need a service line out of your house.
Yes.
Typically done by the each, that's a local improvement. You need the main in front of the house to convey it down, down the street, that's usually by the front foot. And that's a local improvement. It has to go to a lift station with a force main to convey it somewhere and then you have to treat it. In this area, the treatment is fart. So there's an SSL, I believe there's SSL assessment on these for the treatment. This would be the regional, or the regional conveyance of it. There's still the local for the main and the service potentially coming when it's deemed necessary.
But that goes to the entire?
That would go to, so the local ones are the, if it goes in front of your house and you have a service line to it, you can assess for it.
Okay, so it doesn't mean if one person needed to connect, then everyone has to pay for the line? That person pays for the line? How, I mean, how does that work?
So there would be a bigger discussion than had we have, say if somebody up here had a family septic tank and they wanted, the city petitioned the city to extend service up here. The greater good would have to be consulted before that would happen. Because for the city to put in this infrastructure with a main, this for a main, this for a main and a service would be very costly. The one person I don't think would want to bear the burden of that. You'd have to go look at the whole thing, just get rid of all those septic tanks.
The other issue too is that Cass County Health or Fargo, Cass Public Health likely will not allow any more private septic tanks in the city.
So this was designed with the intention that it could be taken in at some point?
I think, I think people can repair their septic systems.
I'm talking about if they have to replace it, I don't know if Fargo-Cass will allow it.
Does Yabla should have septic systems?
Yes, we have septic, yep.
And we've done studies to get sewer out there too.
I don't understand how they get, I'm really sorry, but it's so confusing to me when like they don't actually have a benefit, but they have a benefit. Like that's confusing to me.
Which is usually the case with regional improvements.
Because they don't really have a benefit if they're not able to connect, because you're not bringing it up there.
But if this was not here, there would be no ability to.
So you're saying we're just not bringing it up there because they have the septic?
They have no need for it right now, nor have they petitioned for it.
Right, because they have septics, but.
But if they ever have.
But this lift station is here, so you actually have a slight benefit.
Yes.
Because it's here and it's available for you.
Very reduced one, because this is all, none of this is based on density or lot size, this is a one-for-one, like we discussed before with septic tanks.
Yeah.
Even, even this parcel here is a one-for-one. So, all these larger lots in Ashwood are one-for-one, they're not the three-per-acre.
Or the one and a half with the ones that have the driver.
Correct.
So you, so you have a slight benefit, but.
The reason.
You don't need it right now.
The benefit is part of that four-pack that Jim described.
Yeah. Well, I understand that there's a potential benefit or a future benefit, but they would also be paying at the time to get the infrastructure to each house, right? They would be, that's why it's a point seven-five.
Any one of these that are one point five for this project, they're gonna get another assessment for the sewer in front of their house and the service line coming out.
Oh, they are also going to, okay, okay.
And is that in their local? Thank you.
Different project.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So this is a strictly regional project.
That makes more sense to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, these guys, these, these, yeah. They're just getting the three, they're just getting number three in the four-pack, as they always call it.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
So what is the average age of you guys' septic systems up there? How, how many years?
Thirty, probably.
Thirty years? Okay.
What's the lifespan of a single-family?
Well, my neighbor across the street just had it, it's checked out last fall, they said it's in great shape. He says they really built them well back then, and he didn't need anything, he had, his was very good, I've never had any trouble with them. I don't know anyone that has had any troubles, except for one person up there. And they put a swimming pool in where the field drain was, and then they put a building, I mean, they didn't have any drainage. After you cover the block with buildings and swimming pools, you don't have a lot of drain. They had to come in every five, every six months and do a little, get it pumped out, but that was one out of twenty-three homes.
Yeah, they had a five-leg system, but eventually turned it into a three-leg.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. Are there any, I mean, I don't know if that's normal for a meeting like this, but are there any other families? Like, I see some nodding, or some looking at each other, I don't know if there's other people from that neighborhood, or can they not speak?
Um, so is, Mr. Guyer here?
Yeah.
Mr. Guyer, can I have you speak, please?
All of this stuff is new to me, uh, so, uh, I'm not gonna say much more than, he read my objection to you folks. Attached to that is the objection I made to the assessment committee. And I don't wanna read it to you, and you don't want me to read it to you, so I would just ask you to read it at your leisure before the next hearing, uh, when you make a decision. That explains better than what I can say orally, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I had Chris already talk, um, was that it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, like I said, we're not making any decisions tonight, um.
Did you want the engineering department to provide different numbers at your next meeting, or are you good with seeing what you saw?
Or would you just like them distributed to you, because they haven't been distributed to you?
What distributed, oh, you mean on the, on the commercial properties?
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I would like to see them.
We can, we can clean that up and send it out to you.
And, and I just wanna be clear, River, Riverdale doesn't, does not have interest right now in getting sewer, correct?
We ask for information, that is really the only thing we're waiting on, to be honest.
Oh, so you do, you do have some potential interest in?
We, we need information, it's the only thing we asked for six years ago, it's the only thing we asked for at the assessment meeting. We'd like to get information so we can have a meeting.
Okay.
Of the homeowners to make a decision.
What's the specific information, just cost?
A lot of it were about the cost, yeah.
Per family on the second step of getting?
I mean, we got no information in the beginning, except that we asked for more information. We were told that they'd come back when there was information, but they.
It was a very basic survey, it was yes, no, or more information.
Six years ago?
Right, but even eight, twenty-one, we still got no information.
Sure.
Okay.
So, we're still.
Is there a way we can?
Yeah.
Get them some info in case they would like to do that sometime in the future?
If you want it on the agenda for the next city council meeting, we do that, you guys can do it when you want.
This infrastructure's already in, and they're certifying it, obviously.
Yeah.
Then we could have a meeting with them and just give them a, an understanding of what it might look like today, if that's something they wanna do.
The meet outside, it's much more pleasant.
Like, I just want, I don't wanna have to take action, cause I don't think they would be prepared for that, but just a discussion.
But we would have to put like a preliminary layout in the cost estimate, everybody looks at cost.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Are you guys good with that?
You're interested in that, at least seeing what it looks like?
Okay.
No tying of hands, I mean, if, if you're interested.
I think the majority of the responses that they got on the survey was undecided, wanted more information.
Yeah.
Took those as a no, really not interested, but I don't know that that's.
Yes.
Well, we could.
We can look at that.
We can revisit it, and at least see if, what you guys think.
Would that make the point seven-five, the, paying for a potential hookup to this be more palatable or logical?
Well, the point seven-five was based on different numbers.
Let's just try to get them information.
Change the commercial side based on square foot, then our numbers go up. So even the letter we got, the numbers would be different.
Are different, yeah, correct.
But it's not, it's not based on square foot though, the change, if we were to make the change.
There is this per parcel, and then the, the commercial is on acreage.
Acreage.
So that's how the units boil up.
Yeah.
So we're not reducing the volume, it's.
No.
So for the acreage, one, one parcel equals one unit, and for the acreage, if there's ten units, then it's three, there's thirty units there.
Okay, so, I can have Jim put together some numbers, just at least show you guys. We will keep in mind the actual amount that would have to be redistributed if we go that route.
Yeah, for sure.
And, uh, just so you're aware, Stephanie is on septic, I'm on septic on, on our own. I understand you guys' points.
I do too.
Completely. I also know that there is some people that, when their septic fails and Cass County forces their hand, the idea of having to completely repair or rebuild your septic system at now a cost of a little over thirty grand, all up front, is a hard pill to swallow, okay? This route, it gets spread out over twenty-five years. So, just keep that in mind, um, and I'm not, I'm not trying to force anything on anybody, I promise you that, cause literally, I'm in the same boat. Um, it's just stuff to keep in the back of your mind when you see those numbers. With that, do we have anybody else?
Nope, that was all the way after that list.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, well, Nick drives, we'll move on to Water Sewer and Street Improvement District twenty-two-two dash one, which was the Vista Industrial Edition pavement. Uh, this project basically was the industrial addition as it sits. The, there were water and sewer services installed to those properties that did not have them, and then there was concrete pavement installed throughout the subdivision. So, uh, this was a, in, in more of a interesting one, this is a four-point-six-one-five million dollars to be assessed.
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but now I'm worried, did, they know that it's gonna be on the next meeting agenda for them to have a discussion about it? I don't know anybody that lives up there.
You mean to certify it, you mean to certify?
Um, to have their discussion.
Something in two weeks. What I'm wanting you to do is direct me at that meeting to put stuff together.
Okay, okay, cause I will not know how to get ahold of any of those people to let them know when it's on.
The one who was talking was a former council member, so.
I could, I could touch her information.
Oh, really?
I could touch base with them.
Which one?
The one who was talking last.
Sharon May, she was the.
Oh, I didn't even put that together.
She was on the council when we did the survey.
And now I recognize the name, okay, I didn't put that together.
I, she lives in Riverdale.
Oh, okay.
I could touch base with them.
So, I have letters, I still have letters in the file.
Okay.
Someone was quite nice.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose track of them.
So, at that meeting, I'd like the direction and to prepare like a concept and a cost.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll deal with that at the next council meeting.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you, continue.
Alright, so, Vista Industrial Edition, uh, this was four-point-six-one-five million dollars. We had general improvements that were both break, broken out by the area method. We had erosion control area, local street was area, water services is a niche, sanitary sewer services was a niche. So the map that you see up in front of you, we grew, if we look at the legend, we have water and sewer connections, the ones that got them were in the green. Those that didn't get them were in yellow. District boundary, obviously, is pretty much the additions. So, we've got, the green was, those that did, that got them or didn't get them?
The green did get the water and sewer.
I don't know if it was had them or previsor, so anyways, um, all these lots here that had the, um, the green got a water and sewer service, those that were yellow did not have. So this was the one that came to the special assessment commission and said that he paid for his outright prior to the project. And that one got, got removed. Other than that, uh, there was some significant discussion had with the special assessment commission because of shop condos. So, if you guys, do you have the, do you have a G I S over there anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if you guys are familiar, you've probably seen this, there are many, many shop condos in this one parcel, this actually isn't the right amount, there are four of them. There's twenty-four here.
And if you go, can you, there's sixteen.
So if you go to a new tab.
Go to a new tab.
And if I go to, where's G I S on the top right?
I think this image is more.
It is, I do, this is, this is the, this is our G I S. So as you can see, there's a lot there. So the special assessment commission took a lot of effort in deciding how the best way to break these out, because if you were to use traditionally, like a street would be a front footage, there's this front footage, all of these uses.
Yeah.
Same for here, this is, I forget how many parcels, or how many tenants we talked about, there's potential for more here, here. Shop condos here, 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 here. So ultimately, they went with the area method, just to, to look for, I guess, a worst-case scenario maybe, is that what's the most dense that you can actually develop this versus having just one. So, um, we did have a objection at the hearing, at the special assessment level, which was this property. It's a large parcel that doesn't intend to make it any more dense than this, they've got some features out here, water retention and some other things that, that pertain to their business, and they don't want neighbors, they don't want it to be very dense. So, um, they did have a question on that, and there's just some breakdown as to going back to which lots had, had services and which ones didn't have services on them, so. The, uh, that was really the only objections we had to that one. Uh, this project was driven by the fact that the city had a developers agreement that once, what's the original improvements, what I didn't know is a gravel road. Got to a certain percentage of build-out, the streets were to be paved, it's kinda similar, not, no different than when we do a residential subdivision, ninety-five, or whatever the percentage is, majority of the houses get built, we put the final lift asphalt on it. It's kinda the same thing, just because gravel isn't a, isn't a surface that's gonna last in industrial area for all that, for all that long. So, these are concrete streets because of the industrial application, lots of truck traffic, and there's some businesses out here that, um, get, that get deliveries and, and other things, so.
Did they opt in or out of water sanitary connection?
Uh, yes, in a way. So if they built before the project, they had to put it in themselves. And that's where, like, most of the, like, this, I think there, well, obviously, there were those.
Yeah.
Brookstones and, and these along here, so they, they may have participated, had they not already been there.
Okay.
So we didn't have anybody say they didn't want it, we were just, we just had ones that said, we already have it. So, in the time it took from the project being approved, to the plant next to the bidding, to the construction, this one got put in prior.
I don't believe you have any written comments on, written, written on this one.
Okay, I, I don't have any questions, do you?
Good.
No.
I, I do have one question, I guess, um, for that. Lot by, yep, with the forty, or four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand?
Yeah.
You said that they, they were treated differently because I said that they were, they did not express any interest that they were going to subdivide?
They were interested in being treated differently. Ultimately, the special assessment commission did not agree to that.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying, I just wanted to make that clear.
They had, they, when we met with this, the representative for this, this property, um, we talked about, look at this one. You've got all this land, and you've got all these buildings, and look at this one, it's a sea of concrete, this one here, it's a sea of concrete. And, um, the representative here said, I get that, but we still want, we're, we're not gonna do that, going to do that, you know, maybe, who knows what happens in the future, we just don't know, we're on a crystal ball. So.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of, that was something the special assessment commission really grappled with, especially when he's got somebody like this that, I mean, builds it out, maximizes the, maximizes the density of the, of lot, and it's pretty common out there.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify which way it was, so that the, the committee said, no, they are not going to honor that, and they will be assessed as any other larger lot. Understood, thank you.
Okay.
There's a, it's a, so, it's a, it's for content creation, is what I was told.
Alright.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, drive us to the next one. Next one is, is Lost River Seventh Edition. Lost River Seventh Edition is a residential subdivision in the south side of the Riverdale River Edition. Improvements consisted of sanitary sewer mains and services, water mains and services, storm sewer mains and laterals, curb inlets and yard inlets, clear water collection laterals, concrete curb and gutter, concrete curb and gutter, asphalt streets, street. Pass them down. Pass them down. Street lights, signage, and amenities to the Lost River Seventh Edition. Uh, this one was typically done with a three-point-nine million dollars to be assessed. Cass Rural assesses the water portion of it, it's in their service territory, so that was three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Amount to be assessed by the city is a little over three-point-five million. So, uh, typically with residential subdivisions and only local improvements, we have the general work, which is an area, so larger than a lot, where you pay. You have sanitary main, which is the front footage, there's sanitary services, which are the each, streets, front footage, first work is by the area, and the lighting is by the front foot. So, as I said earlier, this is in the Cass Rural Service Territory, and they special assess that cost. Uh, if you have a question on the front footage calculation, the area or the each, we kinda went through that with the other projects, so we won't go through all that. The HOA lots along, let me drive. The HOA lots along the streets, Metal Art Parkway. Uh, these are landscaping features, and they are a zero, proposed to be a zero assessment. Uh, this has been traditionally done throughout the Lost River Edition at the request of the developer, because the HOA does not get enough money to pay the special assessments, so they would prefer it just to be spread out over the residents of the, of the subdivision, and that's something that the special assessment commission has agreed with, and that has been doing for the fifth edition. Yeah, I don't, I'm not quite sure what happened on the first edition, that might have been a, a trial type of thing, so. Anyways, uh, no, no regional components on this one, they're all just local based on front footage, so. Any questions on the project?
I just see in the memo, it says, special assessment commission requested to see the preliminary special assessment. Oh, maybe I read it wrong.
So during the objection to the special assessment commission, it was brought up, there are preliminary estimates that were put out.
Yes.
In a, at a much earlier date, and at that time, the estimated project cost was less than what it ultimately ended up being. There had been quite some, some advancements, I guess, in the policy or in the direction or in the typical way that the parcels are assessed in the interim, since when the original was put up, this is a twenty-two project, I wanna say, building twenty-two. So, um, there was some questions just on what it would be that way. Another one was, uh, we had looked at the option of just doing it strictly as area. Oh, don't worry about front foot, don't worry about each, don't worry about whatever, just do it strictly by area. And special assessment commission didn't like the way that that, that worked out over the entire, over the entire area. Because there were people that, residents that came, you know, the front footage on a irregular-shaped lot is kind of goofy, because this has got a narrow frontage and a large rear.
For cul-de-sacs.
For cul-de-sacs in irregular-shaped lots. So, what we end up doing here on these irregular-shaped lots is we add the front and the rear together, divide by two, you get kind of a composite, lot width, and, um, if it's square, it's pretty easy, but when they, or rectangle is pretty easy, but when they're not, we, we have to go through and make some, some of those adjustments, so. Uh, the irregular-shaped lots, I think, uh, one of these was, could come in protesting just because, you know, it's, it's a really large lot, but a really small frontage, the northwest one. you know, it's, it's a really large lot, but a really small frontage, the northwest one.
Yeah, I've got some on the next page. This one.
Could you give a, and do you know, I mean, I realize that the specials on every lot are different, but when you say that the estimates that were initially given are like, what are we talking ballpark? Are we talking a ton difference?
To some, I would say that it would be a ton.
It was a significant difference.
What was it?
The one that it was seventy to ninety, right?
You got it. It was twenty thousand or something?
And where, where do the estimates come, like, where do the estimates originate from? And, and the residents receive those from?
So like the time the lot up here, it was purely the developer.
Okay, I just want to like, because where like, do estimates come from when people are initially looking to build? Do they call the city or how do, how do you get?
So the city, the city council directed staff to start sending letters right away with proposed projects.
Yep.
And so that number, that number is based off of Jim's original preliminary estimate of the project.
At that time.
Based on what the special assessment policy provides.
Okay.
And that's it. And it is caveated with, this number is not the final number. This number is subject to change because we don't know what happens.
The final project.
Yes.
And were we doing that back for this project? The twenty, were we doing that? I couldn't remember when we instituted that.
Yeah, that's where this, that's where this came from. That original number was from the city's letter.
I mean, I didn't remember the timeframe. Were, were we doing that back in twenty, twenty-two? I don't remember. Sending out those initial letters.
I don't know. I don't know where it started.
I know. I just couldn't remember when we started that process.
Yeah, but it's included in the preliminary.
Okay.
And that's when you go back through, through the documents, I think that's where.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, so that was my concern with the city wanting to do these letters in the first place because people do get that letter. They see that number and then that is the expectation sometimes that that number is then going to be the final number. And if it changes, then obviously that, if, if it changes by twenty thousand dollars, that's, it's not nothing. So.
I recognize that, but it's better than a complete zinger when we don't give them anything at all to base what they might potentially be getting. Do you know what I mean?
I don't. I don't know which one I would prefer.
I actually have, I'm a, I have an idea, but I will reserve my comments for later in the discussion, probably.
So with that composite distance, I think that kind of gets us to where one of the objection comes from. This lot here has been in discussion. So when we calculate the front foot, you won't have it in your packet because
This is yours? This is the agreement's your last?
That one was passed out.
This is, yeah, this was passed out and we had this in preparation for the objection that we, that was coming. So these black, heavy black circles on this flat are the property lines. And then those are the numbers that we use for the frontage and the rearage. So in order to get the frontage, we add sixty-nine point three plus the C fourteen, which is the curve, which comes from the curve table over here. And then on the back, we added up the distances along the, along the true property line. Now, these project beyond because there's a wetlands or a little oxhole back here. So these project beyond the beyond the property line. So we did find in correspondence with Mr. Hobson about that there was an error in the calculation on one of these lots and that would be this one here. So we do have to correct that. And then I think he can tell you his objection, but the question that we're going to have tonight is, do you guys agree that it's here, here and here? Or do you think it should be like a hypotenuse connecting this triangle? If you do think that this was a straight line would be more fair than adding up the, the true lot line, it does obviously squeeze the balloon in a different direction and reduces this assessment, but it also raises others by some hundreds, a hundred dollars on it.
Yeah, so if you go with a, a hypotenuse, it will, it will lower that one by eight thousand three hundred roughly.
Lot eight?
Yeah.
And that's your lot?
And then the other lots subsequently go up one hundred and seventy-one on average.
Oh, wow. The other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
It only changed it by eight thousand.
Corey's will be going down by eight thousand three hundred.
And did you talk to the special assessment commission about this error and perceived?
I didn't have these numbers at the time. And so I had asked, I had asked Jim and the team to say like, please look at the numbers because when I look at the two lots next to me, yes, mine's a little bit bigger, but they're, you know, in the eighty thousands and I'm in the ninety-four thousand in my total assessment. And my initial number, just as you were asking there, in January twenty twenty-two, the initial number was seventy thousand. So we're up twenty-four thousand dollars. And those numbers where I got them from, I know in the council meeting, guys briefly talked about it in the last council meeting this week. This is right off the city website. So city projects, it's right underneath that. That's where these numbers are coming from.
Okay, okay.
The worst one of all of these, there's one lot that goes from sixty-five thousand to a hundred and seventeen thousand. So they're up eighty percent.
Which lot?
Thirty. So it's the bottom one, right at the end of the road.
This one or this one?
That one right there, the hundred and seventeen. And so I'm just taking the numbers off of the, the city website there. And to say that the project went up in price, I understand that, but there's thirteen of these lots in this neighborhood that the actual special assessments went down. And so mine will go up twenty-three thousand. There's a, there's on Dogwood, there's almost everybody there and going down by up to, I guess, the, the best one, Dogwood, just kind of said it is two and a half percent. Some of them are going down. Lot four, six. So that would be on beyond the other road. Somewhere in the middle. I can tell you here after this four, six. It's forty-nine thousand dollars now. I have a set to look. So it's lot, block four, lot six went from fifty-six thousand down to forty-nine thousand. And so like interstate engineering provided these preliminary numbers in twenty twenty-two and they got them somehow with some policy, I'm assuming that they used. I, I would love to go back to those numbers and then the project did go up by four hundred thousand. And that can be equally divided amongst the houses because everybody is then should go up. If the project was built, these are the assessments that were people are said. If it goes up four hundred thousand, everybody's special assessment should go up by a percentage of that four hundred thousand. Whereas mine's, mine's jumping by thirty-three percent.
But if we did that, then we wouldn't be going by the assessment policy.
Or can you, can you speak to those variances of the numbers again?
Back in twenty twenty-two and thereabouts, it was either a very generic special assessment based loosely on area or it was an assessment based on an each. And as the projects got to be more frequent, got to be larger, got to be more involved, and the special assessment commission got to be much more into the nuts and bolts of the project, things evolved in the way that things evolved. And that's what got us to the front foot, the each, the area. All of that, they understand that, they went through that. So when we present the methodology for this one, throw away the twenty twenty-two, let's not talk about that because it's not the realistic numbers we have to work with. That this isn't, because this is consistent with Lost River First, Second, Third, Fourth and Fifth.
Our process, the process.
The numbers you were going to, it was just like a preliminary, like, this is maybe what you could be getting.
Yes.
Just to try to, yes.
To take, especially when it's published somewhere, that it's not gospel.
Yep.
And nobody ever reads the fine print on there that, you know, subject to change. We tried to caveat the heck out of it that.
Maybe we should do like a range if we're going to do it.
Well, and typically if somebody calls and asks, I do typically do a range because, I mean, we don't know what an estimating is going to be three hundred or thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
We just don't know it down to that.
I mean, we don't, it's impossible for us to not tell the projects.
Completed.
Completed.
So we are putting much more effort into it on the beginning end of it to try to get these specials to be more accurate, knowing what the implications of it are. But I, when did you buy your lot?
In twenty. I was the first, I bought the first lot in there.
Yeah, but it must have been after the improvements were done, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was November.
Something. So anyways, I'm just saying that at the time, there are no homeowners out there. It's all developers. When it originally, before it gets built, it's all owned by a, by a developer and then they, they sell it. And I, I think that they give, and I know that we had talked to the special assessment commission about you doing your homework, not just relying on it. Someone tells you, but looking to find the documents and find the numbers, which credit to him for, for taking that initiative and not just, not just saying, the realtor told me this, you know, so like I said, credit to digging up and finding the information. But we, I, I will tell you, we are trying to be much more accurate in the beginning and trying to be, and I don't want to say this to scare you, but be a little hot. You know, we always, whenever we put an estimate together, we want to be the middle of the road. There's two bidders lower than us, two bidders higher than us, and we're smacked out of the middle. And a lot of times we do that. Sometimes we don't, we don't, we don't get that, but majority of the time we do.
So two things I'll add with this, this one as well. Jim, can you scroll to that corner lot in the southeast corner? That big lot had an assessment on it originally. The special assessment commission took it off because it doesn't receive a benefit from this project. So whatever was allocated on that during the twenty twenty-two numbers is gone, so it has to be distributed. The other thing I will say is that it's all the irregular shaped lots that are the ones that got that higher assessment and that's because of the city's policy with the irregular sizes. Look at all of them. Every one that's not a perfect rectangle has a higher assessment and that's due to the policy. And so it's not, you can't just take, because I, I know that you brought it up before of like, well, how come some went down, but some went up? And, and I thought the same thing. Like, that doesn't make sense. Why does, why are some going down, but some going up? It's because of the policy with the irregular lots that drove the price up and that's why. And then in addition to that, that corner lot not having an assessment on it, that cost had to go somewhere.
So you're saying we should follow policy?
I'm saying it did follow policy.
But as in, in general, if we look at the special assessments I'm going to get charged today, we should follow policy. That is built in the last policy. Is that correct? The policy that was written for twenty twenty-two that we're all, irregular lots, we should follow it. Right?
This is using our policy though.
It's not. And so I want to take the next step too. In the policy, there's a different angle, there's two I wanted to bring up that I had written down here is irregular shaped lots are pie shaped lots. In it, it describes the front footage. If you want to follow the city policy on the website, you can, but the policy states that is off of front footage. Let me just grab the, the note here. So pie shaped lots, description. Lots where the front width and rear width are not equal, but very greater than twenty feet. Mine varies by fifty-two feet. Rear width measurement is taken no further than a hundred and fifty feet from the front property line. If that's the case, I measure for my front property line, a hundred and fifty feet back is a hundred and fourteen feet. And so I think if you want to follow policy, I just want something followed that everybody's based on the same thing.
An error on our end?
But the policy is that.
Consistency with the other five subdivision.
How did you get the hundred and fourteen? That was the hypotenuse?
Uh, no.
This dimension here.
So it's the long.
Oh, the front one. Okay.
And so the policy says irregular pie shaped lots, there's an example of a pie shaped lot that's exactly like mine. You measured a hundred and fifty feet back, you go across and that's the number, a hundred and fourteen feet.
Oh.
So I should be a hundred and fourteen feet if we want to follow policy. And I'm fine with that too, because it's all going to wash up to be seven, eight thousand dollars.
Did you have these conversations with the special assessment commission too?
I didn't because I didn't have their spreadsheet to show what my lot, my real lot line was.
So this, so this concern about how we're doing the calculation, you didn't chat with SAC about this yet.
I just said something's wrong and you have to check the numbers. This came back three days later and approved them.
Oh, yeah.
And so I never had a chance to discuss these numbers, what I'm telling them.
If we have a policy.
Well, a note to, and you're not going to like this answer, but the special assessment commission and city council are authorized to deviate from the policy. And I know, I'm saying this because did that happen here? Is there deviation from it?
That's what I'm asking, I guess. Like, I know that we can use our discretion.
And there you go.
But what you're saying is we've used this method for
Previous.
Previous.
One through six.
Not, not measuring back a hundred, what did you say, a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, what could be a question is whether we could do the average though. Is that possible?
He wants it measured like right here.
I just want to, I'd like the policy followed. Like, if that, it benefits me the most, yes, but. Yeah, the angle numbers, you have the, you have three different numbers you could pick from. And they picked the biggest number of mine, which I obviously want the smallest number.
Right.
Um.
I do admit it.
And so that's, but that's fair. Like, anybody would look at that and say, twenty-three thousand dollars, that's a huge step to swallow. I just want if policy follows, I get eight thousand dollars saved.
I'm sorry.
It's dry.
If this is a local improvement, why do we have to go with whatever we've, I'm sorry, whatever we've previously done?
Just try to be consistent.
I know, but if it's a local, why can't we start using the policy moving forward?
Certainly can. It's not like we just took the policy and threw, cast it off.
And like Lucas said, I know that we have discretion to change things as we deem necessary. And if we're trying to be consistent with the previous improvement districts, I get that. So with your calculation then, what are you looking at for cost? What would it?
If we, if we did the hundred and, back a hundred and fifty feet or whatever, what, what is the difference?
Or do you just square this off? Take this and then just continue and average it. It's an eight thousand dollar reduction.
Eight thousand three hundred.
I mean.
It does make.
Your number must be close to mine because that's roughly what I was guessing too. I.
So rather than
So rather than doing his.
Following policy, are we not following policy? Can we say, council, what do you think about moving to this line here?
I see what you're saying.
I can see the benef, I can see that one instead of going like this and this.
For sure.
But I wanted you guys to know that we were following the pins.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
And I can, obviously this lot is different in that it doesn't have this goofy
Sure.
goofy bit on there. So the other thing we could look at would be adding this plus this. And I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm just saying
It must be about the same.
Go like that, which is consistent with this one.
With the other ones.
Which is consistent with this one. They've all followed that easement line.
Yeah.
And then.
So that, so if we did this, it would be more in, in line with what you were thinking.
The eight thousand dollars is roughly what I was trying to.
The hypotenuse version of the average for front and back.
If it fits to that eight, probably. Do you know what the hypotenuse of that would be roughly?
Yeah, we, what it was, we discussed it.
I tried to do some.
A squared plus B squared equals C squared, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not even trying on that.
If Matt only had a computer.
If Matt had a computer, I wouldn't be here right now.
If only Matt's computer was working.
I don't know that. You don't need that to work that well.
It technically works. It's just really loud.
My square root.
Yeah, I had to stop in the meeting the other night, watch it.
So, here you go. So one ten, one ten point seven.
Calculations.
I don't even know what to say, but that's very impressive.
I got one or nine with my.
You did it old school and then it went up.
Well, he's a punk, governor, but yeah, I did.
You did it like square root and everything, old school, good for you.
You need our engine.
Okay.
So with that being said, we do have to correct this one. There was a fat finger entry. So we'll do that.
Well, I am lot seven. Could, I found out about this a couple hours ago. Could you expand on that, please?
We used the wrong number.
Yeah, we quit. Yeah, I was going to go down essentially.
It'll go down a little bit.
We're using the back lot amount or what?
Not really sure.
It's using my numbers.
Oh, the number's just wrong for lot seven?
We just got fat fingered. Instead of one twenty-five point one four, I don't remember what you said.
It was like one thirty-five. I was like a digit off.
It was something you said is wrong and that's all.
They added, you took my two lot numbers, the back two numbers of mine, those two meds, those two equal the number that you have there.
Oh.
Okay.
What direction is it going?
Down.
Okay.
So the
Well, down would then back up because it is.
That is.
Yeah. When you go down the, the other yellow square, so seventy-nine plus fifty-eight is the number you have currently in the assess versus the one twenty-five.
So we, I admit that we did, we did have a blunder in our entry there. So
That's three more.
Three more blunders?
Yep.
Yeah, there's, there's one other two.
The front is also wrong.
On which one?
Of his.
Oh.
The C thirteen or which one?
Eleven twelve.
His is eleven twelve, he's thirteen.
Why is there a pin, a point in the middle of lot six?
Because this is a curve. This is a curve. So the curve dimensions come from the curve table.
So block three, lot seven, the front and the back are both wrong.
Block three.
Which is this one? The one you just talked about, sorry. That one.
Lot seven.
So those, the front and the back are both wrong on that one. And then.
Somehow it must have got off one of your goodness.
And then block four, lot six. You use C three versus C two. So you picked the wrong number there.
You make a note so you can fix this.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Tomorrow.
And I have one more point two, which is block four, lot fifteen. You used lot seventeen as your measurement.
Okay.
And I was just trying to make it, I was looking at them all, trying to figure out fairness and see like what it all was. And so once I looked a little bit, I'm like, the numbers are all here. It's just a big spreadsheet. Just dump the numbers and it spits them out. So I appreciate your time tonight, Jim, and everyone else too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for reminding these.
Uh, lot four, lot fifteen.
Thank you.
So do we need to tell you tonight that?
I'm telling you, we're going to fix something.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Can we?
I admit that.
We're going to take, we're not supposed to take action, but we how do we move toward making, doing the hypotenuse as part of the average?
So Jim will take these comments tonight, work with Nick, revise the numbers and present the list to you guys at your next meeting.
Okay. And I'm sorry, your name was Cory, right?
Yep.
I just got to make sure I'm writing the right notes on my right here. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
So, so just add. So, so just to answer your question, your assessment will change if they make those changes to fix the lot dimensions. But if his goes down, it's gonna go up for everybody else. I just don't know what the numbers are.
Were you having to figure it out?
I've been learning more about this in the last couple hours, but on the back of the lots, if it's not developable, is that square footage still counted for assessments?
Yeah.
So we use this number here.
No, it kind of isn't, because you're, you're pulling into where you, right?
It's a mess. The, the county side doesn't have the dotted line, so on the county website, it shows that we own the trees.
Yeah.
I know out here it says it doesn't, but.
This is the document, theirs is the tracing of this, so this is the-
The whole line looks on the county website.
Correct, this one here.
But you guys use the pins?
We do, because that's the official, in the ground.
Which does actually give them a little bit of a deal on the land that they can't do anything with.
Right, because this is a, and these are projections back to building.
The area's built into it.
Yeah.
I don't have the trees, I have trees, I can't take that down.
Okay, alright.
Nice work Cory.
And then you, you didn't have a excuse me, I don't know your name.
I'm Todd, by the way.
Okay, you didn't have a written objection, did you?
No, I just found out a few hours ago about lot seven, that's why.
Okay, okay.
Todd, what's your lesson?
Glenn, Elliot, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay. And that was the only objections for this one, is that correct?
Yep.
Lucas?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, Jim, go ahead and carry on. Go on to the next.
Oh, all right, the next one is water sewer storm and street improvement district 2022-5, made with the state's position phase two. Similar to the last project we talked about, this is for the residential subdivision that includes sanitary sewer mains and services, water mains and services, storm sewer mains and lateral, curb inlets, yard inlets, concrete curb and gutter, asphalt streets, streetlights, signage, amenities for building, lighting, station, and Lomar work, which would remove the properties out channels for floodplain. So, uh, this was another project that was in the Gasquere lottery territory, so the total project was 4.65 million. Gasquere assessed 407,000 and change, and the city is assessing 4.2, roughly $5 million. We have general work by the area, the local assessment, we have earthwork by the area of a local assessment. Street front footage is a local assessment, sanitary sewer front footage, local assessment. Sanitary sewer services are the each, local, local storm sewer by the area, and landscaping amenities and lighting, front footage, those are local amenities as well. Of note that this was a Lomar requirement, so Lomar is a letter of map revision. So it was recognized that the ground elevation was below the baseball elevation of 905.7. A bunch of the flood, 90,000 yards of fill were hauled in to raise the site up out of the floodplain, which is a pretty significant cost that came with this project. So, um, once again, we get described the, the way the method was. Parcels within the district that are not assessed are on Burgundy Drive, you'll see that on this, that there are some. Okay, you zoom in that one, right? Okay, so these are zero because they were part of the first edition and they got their assessment as part of that one, but we've made a square box. So anyways, um, most parcels are not in the district. Let's see here, special assessment, we didn't have any objections at the special assessment commission level, so I don't believe you've received any for, for this project.
No.
So that's kind of it in my show.
Okay.
The regional costs were spread out over the last assessment for sanitary sewer lifting and the, and the sequential ponds and that.
Question on this, uh, is there any additional costs that have been coming up with the Lomar that's been requested? Has it been, has everything final on?
That's part of this.
Okay, kip?
Yep.
Yeah.
There's no other, other costs coming to that?
Not for that.
Okay.
You'll never even see, there's never more costs coming.
Fair enough.
Well, always something.
So, so this, uh, I do have one other question, I guess. And streets, so this, this includes street, um, for the, the sections of the street that do not drain, um, are they going to be repaired or any kind of, you know, with, with a final-
I'll get back to you on that.
Fair enough, alright.
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
I know where you're talking.
Yep.
Zeros are gonna be in a future phase, I'm assuming?
No, they were a previous phase.
Oh, okay, okay, maybe I missed that.
They were a previous phase.
And that was where I was going with additional costs as well, so, fair enough. Kip? I have no other questions.
Nice rectangular lots.
Sure didn't have a debate on front footers, rear foot, rear yardage.
Perfect.
Rear footage.
Any questions?
Not for this one, no.
Okay, go ahead Jim.
I am sorry, you guys, I do not know what's wrong with me.
Alright.
You're blind?
Next one is Southdale Farms fourth edition. What's that?
Big one.
The big one.
Okay.
Alright, so this is water sewer storm and street improvement district number 2022-6, Southdale Farms fourth edition. Project consists of local improvements to construct a residential subdivision, including sanitary sewer mains and services, water mains and services, storm sewer mains and laterals, curb inlets, yard inlets, concrete curb and gutter, asphalt streets, streetlights, signage and amenities for the Southdale Farms fourth edition. Um, project also included regional storm sewer, which drains into drain 27. So the regional component of this is there's a trunk vein that comes along here, goes, goes over to 66th street, up and over to the drain, drain 27 that is. So, um, let's see here, regional, there are both local and regional improvements to this addition. Uh, the regional improvements are due to the storm sewer. And that's pretty much it for the regional, the local, like we talked about, was the general, the earthwork, the street, size, truck, sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer services, local storm sewer, landscaping amenities and, and lighting. So, uh, we go through here, we've got not assessed was parcel 1511, 9000, 40,000, which is part of the Southdale Farms sixth edition. That is down here. Oops, where was I going with that?
To this up.
To this up.
There you go, that very small corner.
Oh, this corner here, we, we had drawn the line, that was not assessed, it's a very small area with very, no benefit to that, so. Alright, so, this one gets to be fun, so stick with me as we navigate through this. So one of the hurdles that had come up is as you can see on this map, Sunset Valley is one big parcel. Southdale Farms eighth didn't exist when this was originally started. Now, Southdale Farms, do we have that one up here anywhere?
Which one are you looking for?
I'm looking for what it looks like today.
So voting area, issue assessments up there?
Oh.
Pull that tab. So go up the tab?
Go up the tab.
I can get it to, I'm like, no.
Alright, that's not the one I want. We have one that shows the area, the individual lots here.
The size of them?
No, just the, on the map. Yes, I guess the size.
If you go to the third one, that would show you.
The third one was?
Right here.
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Alright, so as you can see, now Sunset Valley has been recorded.
The yellow is Sunset Valley.
The yellow is Sunset Valley, so what was one large parcel is now many, many little ones.
Yeah.
And Southdale Farms eighth edition has been recorded. With that recordation of this plat, right away it was dedicated for 65th Street Avenue, and right away it was dedicated for 64th Avenue. So rather than wait until next year when the county requests that the large number get split into the smaller number, smaller lots, we were directed and guided by the attorney to do it now in preparation of not having to do it next year. So that added that during the process, this lot got smaller or bigger.
Which, which lot?
The Southdale Farms eight, because they dedicated the right of way here and dedicated the right of way there and gained this piece of a large lot that wasn't, that was this one here, let me go over it. So as you can see, this lot now goes over to this line here. They, it goes to here and then they lost this portion due to the right of way dedication.
So it got bigger?
And then small, it got smaller than bigger.
So it is bigger currently?
Bigger, right?
Uh, it's like nine point, was it 9.94 versus 9.74, something like that?
Slightly, slightly larger.
I think slightly.
Slightly smaller.
It's pretty close.
But it changed from the original, it changed from the original area to be assessed.
Yes.
And since, do we have one of these with the benefit on there? Like what's what?
I think it's the third one here.
Go back to there and then-
Right.
Go to the, the other, yeah. Okay.
There we go.
So, we've got Southdale Farms second edition, Southdale Farms fourth edition, sixth edition, seventh edition, ninth edition. Harvest Valley Church, which is Southdale Farms eight, Compact Development and Sunset Valley. So we've talked about this being Sunset Valley, we've talked about this being Southdale Farms eight, and that's the church, and then these lots here are commercial lots along 64th. So, in working with the developer, as has been done in the past, a value was assigned to the residential lots. And then a equal, or a agreed upon value was assigned to the larger lots to balance out the balloon. Right so far? I'm, does that make sense so far? Okay, these two have been working an awful lot on this and I'm trying to bring it home, so we'll see how this, how this keeps appearing.
You can do it.
I have a thing on that one, we'll see. So, this was what was presented to the special assessment commission.
First one was.
The first one is?
Correct.
Okay, so this one was the one that was spent, was presented to the special assessment commission and approved by the special assessment commission.
The map that we have.
The one we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Kip?
It was during some discussions with the church about how this was all calculated and how some other things were calculated, it was determined that there was a fat finger to-
Yeah, I was referencing an old version when I did with Chris, so it was-
So, so what I'm getting at is that as these parcels are changing at the county, they're making the spreadsheets search for things, you know? So it matters if you're referencing an old level versus the new level? So that's where I think something got miscommunicated here from the referencing. So with that being said, this lot goes up, went up with the correction.
Yeah, it's like the balloon analogy where that lot's being squeezed versus open, so that pushes the assessment back towards it.
So this one went up, up.
No, those all went down, everything went down.
These went down, this one went up.
That's right. So the church has not changed it in this one.
Which one is the church?
This one is the church.
So you have the old error version?
I have the map with these numbers on it.
Yeah, this is-
These are the correct or incorrect numbers?
Incorrect.
These are, yeah.
These are the ones that were approved by the special assessment commission.
Where's the correct?
And we're going through that.
We'll get through it then.
We're going, we're going, since we hadn't been directed to do it, but we do it was wrong, I guess, if you would say that, we're, we're getting, we're getting to that point. Okay, so, these three areas here make up this parcel that was subdivided into Sunset Valley, Southdale Farms eight, and Southdale Farms six, nine, nine.
Yeah, those are both nine.
Yeah, Southdale Farms nine. So the other thing to note, darkness, not to really confuse you, is that these lots are part of the ninth edition, but the improvements were put in as part of the fourth edition. So we had to take, and the ninth has now been recorded, but it wasn't at the time, so we had to force a large number onto this parcel to re-subdivide it now that it's been recorded, to get us to this current date. Keeping up? Okay. So with that being said, we do have an objection from the church and Christiansen companies, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So, I think we want to hear that, so I catch my thoughts, and then we'll come back to where, where we're at. Does that work here?
Alright, who wants to go first?
You can go first. Mine might probably be a little bit longer. You got pretty pictures, I'm bringing in pretty pictures. No, appreciate you guys taking the time. I was able to bring one of our board members with tonight.
Hi, good to see you.
Yeah, uh, as Jim was talking, a lot of what was in our objection, just making sure we have the chance to talk to you guys, enjoy doing it. But one of the things that he mentioned, the, the area difference, we were just formally clarified that error, which is like in the analogy, if it's incorrectly smaller areas, about 15 and a quarter, I believe, instead of 27 something. So when that size gets larger and you're multiplying everything by an acreage, makes a difference for everybody, actually, for including parties that wouldn't be here tonight, like the school district or the park district, there, everyone's base rate would come down once we correct for this, I assume. Uh, and then the other, uh, question I was raising, if you could put the, um, yeah, if you can go to this map and if you can zoom in on that 365 number on the map here at the top, which is actually now 385. Yeah, what was the one?
Okay, so this is the change, yeah, so it was the right of way fell off. So, during the special assessment committee, or commission meeting, they made the determination that whatever right of way fell off wasn't gonna affect these areas. So there's right of way falling off of church lot, which was-
Well, so to, to be clear, the right of way would have come out of 8050, which is that giant parcel that also Sunset came out.
Where the right of way fell off.
But it was coming out of a parcel that includes all of Sunset Valley and nine.
Correct, yeah. So that's kind of where I'm confused on, because we got a direction where it was, we were gonna keep the areas the same. So Sunset Valley was gonna say Sunset, Sunset Valley, and I believe they lost 11.5 acres. So then their new average went up to 44,000 per, per acre for the storm sewer. And then Southdale Farms nine did what we thought it was gonna do, where it did lose right of way. So that was more predictable, but I guess with your lot, we're trying to figure out how we should address it, and I'd like, I guess, advice from city council or trying to figure out what seems appropriate. Because I tried doing a method right, grouped the two lots together, where it appeared there is, I'm not sure if there's an exchange of land, or what was going on.
So they sold us portions of two parcels.
Yeah. Sold portions of two parcels.
Yep.
So-
But, yeah.
We're not asking you to tell you lots to it, but this is the first time that this is coming up with all these moving pieces in the middle of the process. And we, we, you know, you look at something, it's a cross-eyed, so we're trying to figure out how to explain it to you to uncross some eyes.
Well, had, did the special assessment commission evaluate what we're discussing right now?
They didn't see it like this, that's the thing, so this was like the day after, or was the day-
I mean, I guess I'd like to hear what their thoughts were, they're the experts, I guess, that'd be my opinion. I mean, I'd like to hear what their, what their thoughts are, if this is new information, so we could see like what their recommendation would be.
I was at that meeting on September 9th, and basically what they said, do what Lucas's recommendations were, and not as far as, but just using what's currently platted is what they said, and then there, I don't think, from what I'm aware, if there have been additional meetings with them? No, no meetings, they approved it at that time. So, the issue gets to be is that the land changed between them and you.
The what changed?
The land.
The land changed, the area of the land we're talking about?
Yeah. The eighth came online, more right of way was dedicated, Sunset Valley came online, and then the church bought portions of two lots. All, all of one and a portion of the other.
But, but this, but this analog, but this description that you're seeing right now was not discussed at the special assessment commission? But, but this, but this analog, but this description that you're seeing right now was not discussed at the special assessment commission?
After the event.
That's what I mean, I mean, could we present this new information to them and get their recommendation? I feel they're in such a much better position than me to make the decisions on this, they're the experts. I mean, that's just my thought.
Lucas?
I know, I.
Are you thinking?
I am.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, but my, my thought with it is, is they already confirmed the list, and then we published notice of the confirmed list. And so my fear of sending it back to them for a recommendation.
Is we're going out of the process.
What does that do for the process? Does that then require additional notices? And if it does, there's no way this gets certified in time to meet the statutory requirements.
So you're saying we can't, I mean, well, we should just talk to them then, the special assessment commission?
Yeah, we certainly can, because I mean, we're going to meet with them next week.
Are you saying that they are comfortable with the?
I'm not an expert on this and all these different moving parts.
And then, so changing some numbers in the formula shouldn't?
They were, they were, they heard about the.
Well, I think we were understanding that Sunset Valley was going to stay.
Yeah, they were fine with that.
Yeah, so they, they're, they're aware of, the special assessment commission is aware that the plats were recorded and because of that, we had to divide it up amongst the new lots now.
Is that the comment on nine dash four?
I think where the zinger was is that the church lot ended up growing to the side, which I don't think, I'm not sure.
Under the updates from the SAC comments?
So what's the update in the parcels?
What is that, what are, what does that comment mean?
Which one?
The nine four?
Nine four is the special assessment commission gave by E, the Christensen Company Commission worked together to create an option to reallocate funds for the lots that the developer owns.
All of our loans.
So what that means is that the, the lots that they didn't have control over, basically, it was making the residential lots and the commercial lots balance, balance out to the way that, that everyone agreed it should be. Working out the math of it, I guess.
And then something else happened after the, the September ninth?
No, so, so to, to look back at my notes, the discussion was to approve with the developer, developer's recommendation as presented, break out Sunset Valley and break out Southdale Farms ninth, and then averaging two parcels and dividing over remainder of Southdale Farms ninth edition. So the special assessment commission did have this discussion, directed the engineering department to make those changes.
Because it says SAC approved, right? SAC approved the developers' requested changes, and to update the list to the newest casquetting parcels.
Which is those that have got subdivided.
So, so what we, the original map is what SAC?
Yes.
Suggested, and they knew all of this information?
Correct.
Okay, that, okay.
So they were comfortable with the numbers adjusting with the new areas? Okay. Well, so what exactly, are you proposing a change then, Jim? Or what?
We have to correct the one parcel.
Okay, yeah.
We have to correct the one to be the right area.
Then you mentioned that there was another thing, I don't think you've gotten to it yet.
Yeah, can I ask, Nick, could you state a clarification? What is the regional storm sewer base rate that is currently on the park district's lot?
For whatever version you had?
Whatever version is final right now.
There is no current version.
Okay, whatever was current, what would be the proper question? What would be the, the current map?
The list that the special assessment commission confirmed.
Okay, so.
When you say base rate, do you mean that, you think that every parcel has, gets a certain amount?
Well, in the, in the policy, there would be an amount by the acreage of the parcel that's determining that, that regional storm water component.
So how much per acre is, doesn't work out too?
On either park district, or West Fargo School, or Gate Cities lot? I know the answer for them, because I have your spreadsheet. But if you would like to state that, it would be great. And my follow-up question would be, in my understanding, I wasn't, I actually didn't get notice of the earlier meetings. My bad, should have been cruising your website more often. But if you go to.
Does this one included?
Yeah, if you, I mean, you could go to approve two, eight four.
So it's an idea of Chris.
Okay, so this, this is a, a newer one then?
Oops. So this is going to, okay, I'm going to say, I think there is, the parcel's not being assessed, I think that might have to change. So if I go here. Southdale Farms nine.
It's roughly thirty-six thousand. The number from the other one is three-six thousand eight hundred sixty, I believe? Yeah. In, in the, that one hundred sixty-one total acres, minus whatever you're subtracting there?
It was, uh, one second.
And that would be the?
So there is sixteen point seven acres that were lost to right of way total.
Okay, so what would be the total acres right now that would be, because what, where I'm going to is, in my understanding of the policy, of how this is written out to work, is the number of acres of parcels in the district and the regional cost of the project, like, you take those together to get a per acre average cost. And then you take the size of the parcels that were added up to be that total, and you divvy it back out. That's how I understand it to work. So the numbers that, that was provided, it appears that correcting for the error that was discovered would move that number to about thirty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars. And so, from my understanding, what the church has ownership of, being the nine point seven four acres, after all the things move around, would equal in assessment about four hundred, sorry, three hundred and forty, something thousand.
Three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five. So in our understanding of how the policy is written and how that map would correct it out to be, that's what we would be anticipating. And on the map we saw earlier, there were, well, there's two maps I've seen.
Is that what you're saying, was it three forty, or three forty-one?
The three, yeah, so.
I'm looking at those right now. So that said, it does not change, that was based on, before it was, it was planted, the right of way was lost.
No, that's, that's a different.
This is the old one, that was the section that was broken off.
No, that's, this is actually different from the one you sent me, it was three sixty-five on the one you sent me. But no, I'm citing just that, what I understand to be a revised base rate, based off the area, the acres that was wrong, multiplied by the size of our parcel. And so that would be, did you, three thirty-five sounds about right.
That's what you're gonna say, three thirty-five.
Yeah, three thirty-five is what that works out to be in our understanding. And so, the other thing I wanted to point out, maybe just for a clarification, the approved certified list that was published, is currently on the website, that actually lists Southdale eight as holding a four hundred twelve thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollar and forty-seven cent assessment, which I've seen three sixty-five on the map tonight, I've seen three eighty-five on the map tonight. I'm not sure where this comes from either. A little confused on that, if we have a certified amount, why do I have pretty different amounts?
There is still certified amount, that's what we're getting to.
I think he's referring to confirmed list from the special assessment commission.
Yeah, it's referred to on.
So the confirmed list was the incorrect version that we were, earlier showing.
That's the four hundred, reduce to three with the error corrected, and change. Three sixty-five, that's what the error corrected, right? This is the error on it.
That's original, yeah, that's without the error.
And that's an error because of the square footage is?
From this one, then right to left one. Me and Chris are working together.
So when that acreage grows, it should reduce.
Exactly, it's like a balloon being pinned, where it lets it come back in essentially.
And so, when, when the, what, what we would be asking is if that area can be corrected, I don't think anyone's objected to that. And then, the second step that happened in my understanding was, you know, Christensen Companies asking to shift some values between their lots, which I have no issue with. But it appears that in, in however that map had worked out last month, our parcel also had their value escalated from what the, the original assessed value's over. If you see earlier in the calculations, the park district lot was locked at the original value of the, the school lot, Gate Cities lot, various lots were locked.
But not yours.
Well, ours had a locked label, and then it was changed.
Were your parcel changed to a new parcel too as well?
Well, it was, it was, I guess you were, if you refer to the, the plat that was recorded and we're referencing now that, that platted parcel? Okay, because.
What I was trying to say is that your parcel no longer existed, that's what I was saying on this initial map, where it was a part of the, the parcel, or this large one.
So it existed in area.
So when that lock fell off, it was because it became a new parcel.
Okay, and so, and so then, but then what was being redistributed onto it as a new parcel included value that had been removed from residential areas at Christian Company's request?
It was removed from the right of way, so it was not from the residential area. That was treated differently, so what fell off was Sunset, so. I was gonna say, it's easier, I'd show you.
And so, also, for reference, Nick, I think we talked about this last week, but if you look at.
Sunset was fifty-two acres, and is now thirty-nine. So that went up to forty-four. So they went up much more per acre.
Can you pull up the, the map again? Okay, if you scroll to your left. Or is that scrollable, or is that shot?
Yeah, Chris is.
No, no, the, can you like, to the parcel next to it?
That's the edge of the sheet.
So the parcel that, very on the left edge, if that doesn't scroll, there's a larger parcel there to the left.
Oh, I got you.
I believe it's nine point eight four acres. Yeah, that more boxy one right there, where they end up, yeah. So if you break out, that parcel right there, which is nine point eight four acres, we hold nine point seven four acres. The regional storm sewer component that has currently been, what's the right word, not certified?
Confirmed.
Confirmed. Confirmed for that lot is actually lower than the amount, significantly lower, I believe it was about fifty thousand dollars lower than what has been confirmed for the church's nine point seven four acre lot. And so, just to look at, it just doesn't seem to be following, I guess fairly would be the word, though, look for. If the lots as platted are nearly equivalent size and receiving similar, if not nearly identical, storm sewer benefit, why is that specific component showing significant variance? No, the total assessments are different because there's local improvements, a one and a. I guess, I feel like I'm going to start talking circles here. If, if there's clarifications I can make to, to your position.
So this was based on the one that was, that I worked on with Chris, so there's mine that was reallocated between.
Two Christensen Companies.
Yeah. So. I want to see if I can draw it on here.
When did your lots change? When did you guys re-purchase more?
So when did we purchase it?
Yeah.
It was the end of July, so July thirtieth.
That extra sliver on the side? Or the whole thing?
We just bought the whole thing, yeah.
Okay.
But it included the sliver on the.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Christensen included a sliver of that next lot.
Yeah.
Which is.
What's kind of, yes.
So the plat had been recorded, I believe in June.
End of June, yeah.
End of June, and so, when we purchased it, we purchased a nine point seven four acre parcel that was platted as such. And then including it right of way, all that had been processed in June before we purchased the parcel.
And did you say earlier that you didn't get the notice of?
Yeah, there was a notice mailed to New Horizon Homes in August about the meeting, but there was none mailed to us.
Are you, were you the property owner?
At the time, yeah. I was told the database in the county's hand, perhaps.
So the plats are recorded, the county takes a while to actually.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, okay. I just was like a clarification. Yep, that's, I thought if it was just purchased in July, I suppose there's the leg, okay, I just was curious.
And you guys were, that was already platted as such, and you just needed a little more room, so you bought part of the next one over from Christensen?
No, when they, before selling it to us, they took what was two of their parcels and they platted Southdale eight as a new parcel. Is that the right way to say that? So they created one parcel using parts of two that they owned.
We only made one purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all unplatted previously, so.
Okay, okay.
So there was one purchase of one, not square, yeah.
I'm just trying to follow what made all of this so messy, I guess.
Yeah. So what is the ask, Peter?
So, the ask is, well, correcting the, the data entry error, which is, is done. And then the other ask was, just going through, well, by policy, I guess, to take what is the area, what is the base rate, and then just multiply that by what we own, and we'd love to. In our understanding, that equals out something closer to three thirty-five. If I have math wrong there.
So that's the difference of about how much?
Well, between the, the list that has been confirmed, being four hundred and twelve, it's about seventy-seven thousand dollars. According to the map that was up there, it's about thirty thousand dollars, I'm not sure what we're going with at the moment.
So it's nine, so I'll do the map real quick. It's nine point seven four acres.
Correct.
And if you times it by the new one, thirty-nine.
The new.
Five to five.
The new base rate of regional storm sewer?
Correct, yeah. And I'll times it by the old. Thirty-four. Forty-nine. So on that with the corrected version, that's about fifty, that difference alone.
In the plus or the minus?
So.
Fifty thousand more or fifty thousand less?
Fifty thousand more, while using the new base rate, because of the loss right of way.
All right, it's the most, Sunset Valley and.
So Sunset Valley was different where they lost.
Total amount of acres in the district went down because of dedication of right of way in Sunset Valley and Southdale Farms eight. So effectively, what was a dollar per acre, now is dollar twenty-five per acre because of the area to spread it out over is less. So the new base rate that they're talking about is just going to be the total acres and total amount divided by it, correct?
Yes.
It's right, I know it is. Okay, so I understand what you're talking about, Peter.
Okay. That way Chris talked it?
Yep.
Correct.
If mayor allows it.
Yes.
I don't want to take over, but.
No, you're fine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a question out probably at the end. Fair enough. Thank you, we appreciate it.
I want it to be right, we all want it to be right.
Yes.
But I also need to be able to defend it and say we, uh.
Can we also all just blame Chris for this, because it's his development?
Hundred percent, yeah, I'll take.
Okay, so me and Chris did do it together.
Yeah, I'll blame. Don't lock yourself in.
I'm okay with it. Sorry, Chris.
So, I guess, the version that I have now is, excuse me, the one that was sent to me this afternoon, and all we're asking, and that's what I asked the special assessment commission, would be to, a lot of numbers on here, but what we'd like to do is take all of the, the residential lots where I show the forty-eight, nine, because we've had, we've worked closely with our builders. They had a lot of concern on some of the corner pie-shaped lots that are on this development, so we're basically taking all of the, the lots that are all similar in size, putting them at forty-eight, nine, except for the three, the three larger lots in the cul-de-sac. We'd be setting those at fifty, fifty-two, five, and then we would be setting the commercial, or not the, we'd be setting the, the six lots that were in Southdale Farms ninth edition, but are actually part of this improvement at, I don't have it shown on this one, but I believe it was like forty-five, forty-five, five, I can give that number to Nick, and then that, that money ends up being, I have it shown here, it's six hundred thousand, or six, it's six fifty-five, five eighty-three, and we would. and then we would distribute them into our commercial lots that we currently, our unplatted lots that we currently own. The, and then it would add essentially thirty-one cents per square foot in those lots. And that's what we asked of the special assessment commission, and they were okay with that. So as far as how the other stuff that Peter was, confirm those numbers, we didn't change anything else, we're just asking to lower the residential lots, and then we'll take a little more burden on our unplatted future commercial.
And you presented that to the commission and that's what they approved? Or is this different than what they approved?
It's pretty close. Concept is, concept is what they approved. The exact numbers, like I said, there was that off area, so the numbers may not be exactly what they approved.
Because, because of the right of way.
Can I just ask you a question?
I'm confused.
Okay, yeah.
When it was presented to the...
How did they not know about the right of way when they were just talking about it?
Because when it was presented to the city council, I'm gonna go back to my thing, when it was presented to the city council as a parcel, or to the special assessment commission, it's a parcel this big.
Okay.
To them, they don't know how that's gonna be subdivided. In the middle of them approving it, so they put a number on this.
But didn't they just have this, didn't they just have this conversation like a month ago?
Yeah.
September fourth and ninth.
So between that time and this time, right of way issues have come into place?
They platted this to include right of way, so if this was an eighty-acre section, and they took out, and the plat came through, and they took ten acres out of that, that's seventy acres of assessable area. That means the cost per acre went up because there's less acres to send, to spread it out over.
So believe it was platted from the county side in between when the initial letters went out to, in former one, of the SAC objection hearing and the objection hearing, it happened in that period of time.
So can I ask, what, what is the right of way for?
Public use.
I know public use, but is there some, some plan that is changing there that we need an additional right of way to be taken, or it just was never done in the first place?
It's, it's no different than, than Lost River Seven, take that one for example. When it was a one big lot, there wasn't a right of way in it, when it gets subdivided, the right of way comes.
So the, the thought behind doing it this way, I know that this has not happened before, and this is, this conversation is complicated, but the alternate was that parent parcel just gets the whole thing, and then the county is having to try to figure this out.
No, no, they push it back on.
Matt's trying to figure this out then by himself of, okay, now how do I reallocate that, this large number onto these lots and blocks now with the right of way?
For example, this, today I just finished subdividing out eight hundred and twenty-eight lineup spreadsheet on subdivisions from this year.
Good job, Matt.
So, I mean, it's, it's one person doing it.
So basically, the acreage reduced in some spots, and then you're just applying what the special assessment commission approved
Generally.
As the allocations, and that's why the numbers are different.
The method that they approved.
Right. They've approved the method, and so we're just changing the numbers that are in the spreadsheet based on area. So you're wanting these numbers just to be super consistent for the green lots?
Yep, for our green residential lots, and then also our...
But didn't, I'm confused, didn't the special assessment committee already do that though? But you're just asking for it?
They're updating it for the error, essentially.
You're updating it for the error?
Yeah, yes.
The, the church error or the right of way stuff?
The left. This, the northwest parcel that we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, right of way, right of way, I got you. The council.
Yeah.
That's the one that you gave me this afternoon, Nick, that shows the correction.
Yeah, we're talking about this one.
Yep, that's the one I just...
So you're saying this needs to be corrected like this? You just wanna flat...
We're imbalance his based on this.
You just wanna a flat number for everybody?
For the green light lots, yeah.
We're changed to that.
That's what we want.
Because of a right of way issue?
And then the commercial will...
Because of the northwest.
Take the difference.
The sky's part of the difference, right of way, yes.
So, if you look at what was figured out, like on those cul-de-sac lots, some of those, I kinda have my text over it. Well, I guess you can see on Nick's screen there, some of them are sitting at like a hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why.
Okay.
But was that per the policy?
That's per the policy, and what we're, what our ask is, and what I asked the commission was using the numbers that we have, and then taking that difference and putting it into the unplatted.
And did they approve that?
Yes, yep, yep, they, they said that would be fine. I guess what were the notes, I think you wrote down?
Yeah, but I'm, so, I can read this, but right now what I'm hearing is like four, four things. A correction to the northwest corner.
Yep.
A correction to the church lots dimensions. A possible change to the stormwater calculation.
Construction stays the same, it's the amount per acre that we changed due to...
Which is the calculation in my head, how I'm terming it, so that's three. Then the fourth thing is they're requesting that the residential lots, which I believe are the green lots, to be the same as previous, previous additions based on these corrections being made.
And I guess my question is, did SAC approve that? Is that, does, is that in line with the policy?
Yes, that is, that is part of what they approved with the, the method that I discussed.
And another question, you, Christianson owns all of that property, nobody else has already bought something that we're going to be pushing more money onto them based on you setting the price of all those residential.
Correct, so the, the four lots that, like setting these residential lots fixed, would be this one, this one, this one, and that one. And all of those. This is the only one, this lot here is actually platted, these are unplatted parcels that are gonna be platted there. And we're not affecting the bank at all.
That's what I was asking, are we impacting?
Nope, it's just our own, yep.
So this is the most easy one, the bank on the previous one, this one, two oh one, zero, zero four four. And it stays the same because nothing changed about this parcel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's from the, the previous one they were looking at. So as I'm ready for it.
To take these four, take these four and come back.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
And so why do you wanna put more on the commercial side now?
The reason is because, like I pointed out, you zoom, you can zoom in on some of those corner lots and some of those cul-de-sac lots. The, the way we see it, like the hundred and twelve thousand, the hundred thousand, the sixty-three thousand on the other side, they don't benefit anymore than, they don't receive any more benefits, so that's why we're just kinda equaling them out. The only thing that we did on the three lots, we're asking to do fifty-three, five, because they are a bigger lot, for sure. And if you, we didn't use a calculation or a formula, but when you were talking about Lost River Seven, you know, this was basically like those lots, so...
You're just worried about moving the, selling these lots if that is the price of the special?
Exactly, we've had a lot of concern from builders, and then also a lot of concern from, you know, their clients too.
But is, is this the, forgive me if I'm missing the point, but is, is what he just said the opposite of what we were just discussing in Lost River? Where we're looking at the lots by area to divvy out the local assessments, right? We followed the calculations in Lost River for square footage, right, or whatever we said?
Yeah, I was using...
Front, front and back, and whatever, is that what we're doing on these lots?
We started with that, that's what we started with, because we're worried about, we, we're worried about how to get to that number. Everybody else is worried about the number.
But why are we changing it here?
So are we following a different process from Lost River than, than...
We are following the same process as Southdale Farms Third. So if we had Lost River Seventh, we used the Fifth, the Fourth, the Third, the Second, and the First.
I'm, so we're not really following the policy then, we're following consistency?
We're following developer's recommendations, which you guys typically do on specials.
The, the policy does allow...
If he owns all that land, that's why I was making sure that we are not impacting anybody that he does not own.
It's also really confusing to me, Chris, because the last time you were in this seat with us, you said you wanted...
Commercial less and residential more.
Well, we do, that's why if you look at my numbers here, we try and keep, so when all the assessments are said and done, we wanna keep these below three dollars, and you can see I got, like, ninety-eight cents per square foot, eight, four. Those are previous assessments, and the ninety-eight cents would be in this, and so I'm looking at the, the large parcel on the corner that's unplatted, and then we would add thirty-one cents to it, so when you add that all up, you're, you're gonna be below two dollars a square foot, and then I, we do know that there's gonna be two additional assessments for the re, for, for sixty-six and sixty-fourth coming on this too. So we'll be sitting right around that three dollars in the end. So that, by looking at this and by keeping other stuff low in previous, so when we change it on Third, now we have the availability to make the residential lots a little bit less because they weren't getting hit as hard. If that makes sense.
And I totally get what you're trying, I totally get what you're trying to do.
Yep.
But also, every development that you have is a different economy, a different year, a different construction cost.
Yep.
So, I don't know, it just, it just seems confusing, and it kind of brings a point that I was going to maybe say we could talk about in a workshop, when we just talked about Lost River, now we talk about Southdale. If we just allow the developers to finance their own local improvements, we wouldn't even, even have to have these discussions. They would have the flexibility to assess whatever they wanted on, on all of their parcels, and residential people would know on the front end, like this poor gentleman from Lost River would know on the front end what, what their assessments are gonna be. It would allow flexibility for the developer, and it would, it would be more reliable, for local, and it would be more reliable.
So I do have a question, based on what you just said, and this is gonna be directed at you, sorry, not to point you out. You said you have a couple more assessments coming yet, right? Are you still gonna own all this land? Is Christianson not gonna sell anything until those other two assessments get...
The other two is sixty-four to sixty-six. Sixty-six will be in the next round, next year, sixty-four, I mean, that one...
So are you not gonna sell anything before all those are given out?
I don't know, might...
But you understand what I mean, is that you can't control it at that point for, for those...
We're not gonna be able to control the regional assessments at all, no.
Understood.
Correct.
But they control the sale price on it.
Right.
Okay.
And we've done that before too, we've had to adjust sale price because of assessments. It, it, it's, there's a fine line on the way this works, and that's why, based on what we have right now on assessments, we're gonna, I mean, that's why we're asking to add that additional dollar amount to those properties, so. Right now we're having some, kinda, are lots of concerns about the green lots, the way they're sitting right now.
Well, it is surprising how much less the people over in the yellow area on the right, Sunset Valley, I mean, they're paying mostly ten and eleven thousand dollars in specials per lot.
They don't get streets, they don't get sewer.
Right, oh, okay, okay.
That's a private developer.
This is represent for them again.
So the assessment district's a whole is for the regional storm.
Okay, this is just representing that in there, yep, yep.
Right, and the assessment districts and the regional storms.
Because they're funding their own local districts, they're funding their own local.
But they're using the big pipe put in with Southdale Farms to get to three twenty-seven for their storm sewer.
Yeah. So the difference is that people in Lost River Seven, they are residents who are concerned about how much they're being special assessed, but here it's a chunk of money, and they're asking permission to reallocate it so that they can sell the lots. That does feel quite different to me.
Yeah, and what we don't want, we don't want to have that same issue that kind of, you know, with Lost River Seven, it's like this. And if, if, the, if the council allows, and the special assessment commission, if it's in the policy that allows the developer to help adjust numbers, that's basically what we're asking. And there is a, a sentence in there that allows that, so.
So the reason, again, that the city has done that in the past is, what we're trying to do is limit the risk of the city with this. And so, if the developer owns all of the property, and the assessment is not going to, and Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you were making this point, if it is not going to affect anyone else with the change, we've just gone and put the developer desires on that because there is no risk to the city at that point, because there's, there's not gonna be an objection, it's what they want as the property owner, and so the city is just conceding to what that is because it's, it's just going on their property, there's no one else that's affected by it, and that is why...
He's just giving these numbers so it won't affect?
No, he's saying, take, take whatever the additional costs is and put it on the other lots that we own, which are the commercial lots.
He's trying to have a fix, he's trying to have a fix here.
I know.
So that, so that these will absorb the cost, and he knows then he can move the residential.
I know, but if we're changing that, like you guys keep referencing this balloon, it's not gonna affect church?
No, because he's saying, take it and put it on our commercial lots.
On the commercial, on his side.
Correct, so it's all...
Okay, then I understand.
Yeah, otherwise, yes, there is, we don't just listen to developers say, well, this is what we want our...
I'm not interested in just changing it and then having everyone else...
It's their balloon.
Okay.
Yep, I'm just, so it ends up being like six hundred and fifty-five thousand, so I'm just putting it on this one, this one, this one, and that one, which we own.
Yeah.
And that's it.
I mean, I can, I, I understand. I can, I can see it, it's just...
It's opposite of what he asked for last.
It's opposite of what you asked for last time.
And I fully understand.
But, but the problem, let me explain last time, so, last time, we were using a different policy, and the residential lots, so you can see these residential lots, and I know it was a different economy then, but these are at forty-eight-nine, and that's what we want them to be fixed at, but, I mean, they would be fifty to sixty-five or seventy on the corners, and even bigger on the cul-de-sacs, so on Third, those were at like twenty-nine. That's the, I mean, big difference, and it was a different time too, but that's what, and then when we did Southdale Farms First, those were at around forty, so that's why. So it's a different ask, but it's because the old policy was putting so much on the commercial. Because of the load factor.
Right, and I can acknowledge that.
And that's where the ask was.
I, I can acknowledge that.
Yep, so that's why it's a different ask, and that, and that's why, to help clarify that.
Understood.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, would you need answers for some?
No, we have, I don't think we're doing it.
Okay, you're good?
We know we're doing it.
All right.
And then, my question is, it'll be to, I guess Lucas, but for the next meeting, for this, is it not a public hearing, or since we have...
This technically is not even a public hearing. And so, this is gonna be done, the next meeting is just to have a discussion and confirm the list, there won't be any public comment.
I thought this is a public hearing.
Correct, this is, this is the city taking public comment.
I thought you said it wasn't.
Cause I'm, we're not gonna do it all again.
Well, I said it's not, it's not a public hearing.
I did that whole thing, a public hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's the city taking comments from those that provided objections.
But we're not gonna, at the next meeting, we're just gonna do it.
You guys are gonna have a discussion and take action on the lists.
Understood.
As revised by Jim.
Will there be, so once all these adjustments are made, and then also like the one on the list station thirteen, will that be sent to everybody that made comments, so then they're aware of what, you know, just before?
No, and that's why I said that the city council is going to, I would like them to set a meeting date at the end of this meeting, so then we'll know like the...
Can't we just do it at the next city council meeting?
You can, if you're, if you're gonna act on the lists and not...
With a what?
If you're gonna like discuss and take action and not have like a lengthy discussion. My concern is like, I don't want your meetings to take five hours, and there's seven, there's seven districts.
I feel like we've gotten pretty far.
Eight hours this week.
Correct, but it's, it's still seven districts that you're gonna have to, to go through, I just...
All right, well, we can talk about it after. We have one more? All right, let's go, let's do it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so next we have Water, Sewer, Storm, and Street Improvement District, number twenty-two dash seven. Southdale Farms Fifth Edition, Southdale Farms Fifth Edition. This is the thing, and it's Lost River, and Southdale Farms Fourth, but there are no regional improvements, it's only local improvements, so it's consisted of sanitary sewer services and mains, water main and services, storm sewer, mains and lateral curvability, arid limits, concrete driven gutter, asphalt streets, streetlights, signage amenities for Southdale Farms Fifth Edition. This was in the caserole service area, so they assessed the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for water, which leaves two point two million for the city to assess. This one was based upon the similar way we've done it before, front foot area and each for the services, so we did not have any comments at the, take that back, did we have any of the special assessment commission? I don't think we had any on the Fifth Edition, compared to be assessed for local street. Oh, yes, we did have a question, so if you let me drive for a second here. The original proposal, which came before the special assessment commission... The original proposal, which came before the special assessment commission, did not show an assessment on these properties for Seventieth Street, and the special assessment commission felt that this frontage should be assessed to this parcel, which can't disagree with, and that's where we got the number four. Four there came from a street frontage. They will get more assessment in the future for their local improvements, the street net, but they do need this to access this area in the future, so that addition was made.
Okay. And there were, there's no objections on this one, right?
No objections on this one. I don't have an objection, but one thing, this is one of the platted.
Say it again?
Say it again?
So, the other thing on that north half.
That's platted now?
Those are platted, too, so they're smaller lots.
You mean between, you mean special, between special, you mean between the special assessment?
That'll be in next year.
Meaning in now, or no?
Okay.
Fix this one in the plans. We'll assess those, we'll, we'll split those up about a year from now, yeah.
Okay, because I, I just thought of that, because we, that's part of self.
Wow, this time around's been difficult.
Some of them.
So I'm, I'm just curious as to why this large parcel was only ninety-one thousand, and you go down to the south?
It's purely the road.
Got it.
It's not waters, not sewers, not.
Oh, okay.
It's seventy.
Got it, fair enough.
Okay.
They sadly will have more coming to them.
They'll have their local improvements coming later.
I see.
I have no further questions.
I don't think I have any.
I don't either.
Okay, with that.
So now it's discussion, Mr. Mayor, on when would the council like to?
Fair enough.
Discuss and take action on these. And if you, if, if the council thinks that you can do it at a regular meeting, you know, by all means, but keep in mind it's seven districts.
If we plan it for a regular meeting, can't we make allocation of what other items are on that meeting?
That's why I was just going to.
You know, I mean.
Defering to the council.
Look at Brenton.
We'll just make, we'll just make an accommodation to the other items.
Coordinate with the mayor.
Fair enough.
Well.
There are some items that will likely need to be heard. If there's any public notices or hearings or anything like that, I don't have a list or anything in front of you right now, but there are some items obviously that would have to be heard, but I'll coordinate, I can coordinate with you.
Okay.
And I believe the lists are due to the county by November one, so that's what will be done this month.
Yeah.
So it has to be done this month.
And maybe we just are kind of no revisit it before the meeting, so that we're not asking the same questions or revisiting all the same information.
If you have questions, you can call or meet with Jim.
So come prepared, you're saying. So are you saying you guys do want it at the next meeting? Sure. Can you guys make sure you're not stacking the next meeting?
Whoa, 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 can you make sure that you just keep the conversation moving through?
Hey, when I was at your last meeting, I did really good.
We're going to start throwing mud.
That's a double edged sword, I mean, there's, there's conversations that had to be had, we were here till ten at the last meeting?
Nine fifty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer to keep it for like a, till eight.
It slowed down once I showed up, wow.
It did.
All right.
There were beefier items.
I'll give you your chance in November, again, I promise. First meeting in November, it's all you.
Hey, I had fun. Okay, so we're doing it at the meeting then.
That'd be my preference unless, I'll defer to the rest of you, but I'd rather not add another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but Brenton, I don't want to be here till midnight, so.
I will coordinate with the mayor.
I don't want to be here till ten, I don't want to be here past eight-thirty.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Sounds good to me then, guys.
I will do my best.
So they'll take, they'll discuss and take action on October twenty-first.
If you need to take over, don't move it along.
Well, it depends on the number of items in the agenda, too. I'm not saying things shouldn't be discussed, I'm just saying, yeah, things need to be discussed.
Okay, all right, can I?
So, with that, are we in agreement, that Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
October twenty-first.
Okay, we'll move on to number five, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do I got a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.